Good evening. It's 5:04 PM in the regular session of the Planning Commission of the City of Lancaster. Please come to order. Tonight, I will offer the invocation. The pledge will be led by Commissioner Cook. If you'd all please stand. Oh, sorry. She's not here. How about Commissioner Smith? Shall we all praise together? Father God, thank you for the many blessings that you've bestowed on this community of Lancaster. We honor and pray for those serving members of the armed forces. We remember and are grateful for those who have served, especially for those who have sacrificed their life for the freedoms that we enjoy in this great country. Father God, we humbly ask for your help and your guidance in identifying the problems that we can rectify in our community, guide us in our efforts to fairly administer the Planning Commission objectives. Help us to use our time and energy wisely, not to waste it on insignificant matters that benefit no one. Please bless us all to your service. Amen.
Please place your right hand on your heart and join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Now, the roll call, please.
Chairman James Boes.
Here.
Commissioners Diana Cook, absent. Cassandra Harvey, present. King Moore.
Present.
Rutger Paris.
Present.
Sandy Smith.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Tonight, you'll notice the vice chair's chair is vacant. Vice Chair Hall resigned over the weekend, and his replacement will be named by the mayor, most likely at the next regular meeting. That means we also have a vacancy on the commission, so we expect to have an appointment for the seventh member at that meeting as well. However, I do not know who that will be, nor do I know the mayor's thoughts on these issues. Tonight, we welcome a new commissioner, Commissioner Paris. Welcome. And as is our custom, we always put the new commissioners on the spot and ask them to give us a little background on who they are and why they wish to serve. Mr. Paris.
Thank you, Chairman. Hello, my name is Rutger Paris. I'm a lawyer here in the Valley. He definitely put me on the spot. Really wasn't expecting to speak. Was hoping to hang out in the back for a little bit and figure this all out. My reason for serving, I just wanted this community to keep its trajectory. We seem to be moving forward in a progressive way, and I just, I hope to continue that trajectory. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and welcome. We actually do that for everybody, so it's we didn't just pick on you. Isn't that right, Commissioner Moore? Tonight, the next item is public business from the floor. Any person who would like to address the Planning Commission on any agendized item is requested to complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary identifying the agenda item you would like to discuss. Each person then will be given an opportunity to address the commission at the time such item is discussed by the commission. The speaker cards are available at the rear of the chamber, and individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. So I should give you a little rules of the road, if you will. Typically, on our action items, we have either, typically, we will have a staff report, and then, once the staff report is completed, members may ask questions, they may not. We then typically ask for the applicant to address us if they choose to, and we give the applicant the what we consider an appropriate amount of time. They aren't limited to time. They're only limited by our deference to hear what they have to say. Once their presentation is finished, we often then ask for the individual speakers, who would then have their three minutes, the applicant then would have an opportunity to rebut those speakers. And then typically, the commission will deliberate on a proposed motion and take an action item. And that's how it works. Some folks had said, well, gee, if the applicant has an opportunity to speak as long as he wants, why doesn't the public? Well, we might be here all night if that was the case. So we've set up a set of rules which are appropriate, and you get one shot at it, and so be as direct and succinct as you can. So one item that's on the agenda tonight, one of our members is going to have to recuse themselves, and that's item number three, I believe. So what typically we will do is, if no one objects, we'll move item three to the end of our agenda. That way, that commissioner then can participate in the entire meeting, and we'll take up item three at the end. So any objection to doing that? All right, thank you. All right. First action item is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 27, 2018. Have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Next item is item number two. This is a continued public hearing. The public hearing was open on this item last meeting, and it's a continued public hearing. We will take testimony on it and anticipate taking action. We have speaker cards on this item.
There is one speaker on this item.
All right, very good. So any of your staff report, please, Ms. Corbett?
Thank you, yes. As I indicated last month, I generally extemporize when I'm discussing an ordinance, but because of the complexity at the state level, I'm just going to go ahead and read my staff report. I apologize if that's stilted and boring. On October 9th, 2015, Governor Brown signed into law the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act, later changed to the Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, which went into effect on January 1, 2016. MRSA established a comprehensive state licensing and regulatory framework for the cultivation, manufacture, transportation, testing, storage, distribution, and sale of medical cannabis through Assembly Bills AB 243 and 266 and Senate Bill 643. MRSA provided that local jurisdictions could prohibit or permit some or all commercial medical cannabis activity. In November 2016, the citizens of the state of California voted to approve Proposition 64, the Control, Regulate, and Taxidal Use of Marijuana Act, which authorizes individuals who do not have a physician's recommendation for medicinal cannabis to possess and use marijuana and/or concentrated cannabis, subject to certain restrictions. Under the Prop 64, local jurisdictions have the authority to allow or prohibit adult-use cannabis commercial activity. In other words, commercial cultivation, manufacturing, retail storefronts, and the like. On February 28, 2017, the City Council approved the Medical Cannabis Cultivation Facilities Ordinance Number 1019, adding Chapters 5.56 and 17.43 to the Lancaster Municipal Code relating to the regulation of medical cannabis. The ordinance went into effect on March 30, 2017. The ordinance allows for medical cannabis cultivation and manufacturing facilities within the city limits based on approval of a local license and contingent on approval of a conditional use permit in the light industrial zone, heavy industrial zone, or any adopted specific plan that permits industrial uses. The City Council additionally adopted Resolution 17-05, setting the maximum number of local licenses issued pursuant to Chapter 5.56 at 10, and the maximum number of CUPs issued pursuant to Chapter 17.43 at 10. Since the adoption of the cannabis ordinance, a total of, I believe it's seven, I misspoke last minute, the seven applications have been approved by the Planning Commission. In June 2017, the state legislature passed and the governor signed Senate Bill 94, the Medicinal and Adult Use Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act. I'm just going to call that the act moving forward, because that's a mouthful, which was intended to harmonize and consolidate the provisions of MRSA and Prop 64 to allow for uniform procedures for state licensing. Local jurisdictions continue to have the authority to allow or prohibit adult use and/or medicinal commercial cannabis activity. The state agencies mandated with licensing and regulating various types of commercial cannabis activity are currently operating under temporary emergency regulations, which recently were revised to allow cannabis licensees to conduct business with any other licensee, regardless of the adult or medicinal designation of their license. Notwithstanding this regulatory change, segregation is still mandated under the state law, which is the controlling law. On August 14, 2018, the City Council adopted Resolution 18-46, which eliminates the maximum number of CUP applications and authorizes the city manager to determine the maximum number of licenses and permits that may be issued pursuant to the Municipal Code, provided, however, that the city manager shall report back to the City Council after each multiple of 10 licenses are issued and 10 CUPs are issued. The proposed ordinance before you in part updates the references to and the definitions from the California Business and Professions Code to reflect the code sections in the current act rather than the repealed section from MRSA. The proposed ordinance continues to prohibit all adult-use commercial cannabis activity, dispensaries or retail storefronts of any kind, as well as medical outdoor cannabis cultivation facilities, delivery businesses, and standalone distribution facilities within the city. The proposed ordinance continues to allow indoor cultivation and manufacturing facilities, the number of which is now subject to Resolution Number 18-46. The proposed ordinance also addresses possible facilities that are multi-section, that is, a facility that consists of multiple suites or units, each of which is rented or leased to a separate tenant. The ordinance incorporates the licensure and approval requirements for tenant licenses. The operator of either a standalone or multi-section facility is still required to apply for and obtain a primary license. The proposed ordinance also would allow for primary and tenant licensees to engage in self-distribution of cannabis and cannabis products, provided the distribution is solely for purposes of procuring, selling, and/or transporting the licensee's own cannabis and cannabis products. The proposed ordinance would also allow testing laboratories to operate in the city with a general business license, provided a laboratory has all requisite state accreditations and licenses. That concludes this report. Available for any questions.
Thank you. You shared a memo with us, and I, for the record, would note that you shared a memo with us providing revisions to 1743.070 and .080.
Yes, thank you. I inadvertently omitted making the revisions to those two sections after the agenda review last week. Yeah. And so what I did in 1743.070, obviously, I deleted reference to cultivation facilities and just called them the more generic cannabis facilities. I also added the requirements for the information and documentation that needs to be submitted with the CUP application to include a detailed description of the types of cultivation processes, the nutrients, chemicals, and other materials that are going to be used in that, as well as a specific description of the types of manufacturing, the products, the packaging, the activities, the extraction methods, whether it's volatile or non-volatile, and what percentage of the facility would be used for such activity. And in Section 1743.080, also just deleted reference to cultivation facilities.
That latest memo and what we received electronically since the staff briefing last Monday, the proposed resolution, as amended, includes our August meeting date when we held a public hearing on this matter. And it also includes two attachments, B and C, to Chapter 1743. The revised resolution and attachments were re-uploaded into our electronic system. Some of us still prefer to touch paper, and others seem to operate very well with electronic distribution. Are there any questions from members before we hear the speaker? No? Who's the speaker, please?
The first name is Brad, and forgive me, I'm unable to pronounce the last name. Looks like Hagan.
What is it, Hagan? Brad Hagan? Is that it?
Forgive me, Hayan. Thank you.
Good afternoon, and welcome.
Good afternoon, and thank you for having me. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Brad Hayan. I'm one of the pastors at Grace Chapel here in Lancaster, California. And we just wanted to again express our conviction and concern that this is a bad idea for a city to be involved in the production of federally illegal drugs. As a pastor, I've seen the devastating effect that medical, or so-called, medical marijuana can have on individuals, on marriages, and on families. And I would urge you not to further our involvement in that destruction. That's all I have for you. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you for your comments.
David Paul.
Mr. Paul, good afternoon and welcome.
Sheriff Boes and Commissioners, good afternoon. Today, I broke a laundry basket, and I was thinking about when I was a boy. I really like the ordinance because it has the ability to do other things in the facility. And I'm talking about hemp fibers and their application for creating jobs and industry in our city. I live in Chicago. It's almost 20 years. But in Indiana, down the toll road, there was these vast fields of marijuana that grew. And they were left over from the war effort, World War II. And they couldn't get enough rope, and these fibers were incredibly strong, so they had to grow it. And they tried to eradicate it for 40 years, and it keeps growing, so you'd always see the cars along and this fall and people out there. But the fibers are so incredibly valuable to make things. You can even make car parts with these things. So we have an opportunity to grow an industry here with this fiber that's incredibly valuable. But I apologize. I thought I was the only card, but I don't want to take any more of your time. Thank you for the vision to push our city forward. Thank you.
Chairman Boes, if I might just interject, just for what it's worth, at the state level, the definition of cannabis expressly does not include hemp.
Right. Thank you. And the proposal before us is a modification to the existing ordinances that were adopted by the City Council a year and a half ago.
Yes.
For the cultivation of medical cannabis, right? Any questions from anyone? I mentioned to you earlier today, and I'd like to discuss it again. There's been a considerable amount of discussion among League of California cities, as well as the State Police Chiefs Association and other agencies and individuals about the delivery of cannabis. And the way I read the proposed ordinance, which includes specific state law language, that's what you've included, right? So is it, then, this city's interpretation that the city may control the distribution of cannabis or not?
Distribution is, it's confusing, I know. Distribution is separate from delivery. Delivery is a dispensary delivering to a customer or a patient, depending on whether it's adult use or medicinal. And that is not considered distribution. Distribution is taking it from one facility to a testing lab or to another facility, or distributing or transporting it to a final store or collective, a dispensary of one form or another. So they're sort of two separate things. And yes, we do have the authority to allow, regulate, or prohibit altogether both delivery and distribution.
So the definition on page two of 5.56 calls out what I assume is the argument on the interpretation of delivery also includes the use by cannabis facilities or any technology platform owned or controlled by the dispensary that enables qualified patients or primary caregivers to arrange for or facilitate the commercial transfer by a licensed dispensary of medical cannabis or medical cannabis product.
Yes, and since the city does not allow dispensaries, delivery is off the table.
So what about licensed dispensaries in other jurisdictions?
We don't allow delivery in the city. What state law does prohibit a local jurisdiction from doing is prohibiting a delivery company from traveling through our city. But we can prohibit delivery businesses in the city and delivery into the city.
So if a licensed cannabis purveyor, seller, whatever, in Northridge, for instance, attempts to deliver product in this jurisdiction within our city limits, then what is the mechanism to control that, given, assuming the adoption of this regulation and ultimate City Council adoption? How's that controlled?
Well, it's only going to be controlled if we know about it. Are we going to know about it? I don't know the answer. But if we do discover that there is a delivery company delivering in the city, we can enforce against that company or that person. The likelihood of finding that out, I don't know the answer to that question.
I understand from the way the regulations are being promulgated by the state that these delivery vehicles will have GPS trackers on them, supposedly. That being the case, there may be a methodology wherein our local law enforcement would have an opportunity to tie into that and make appropriate analysis and deal with it.
Possibly. That's possible. I don't know, at the state level, if a delivery company applies for a state license, I don't know if part of that license application requires that they identify the jurisdictions that they will be delivering to. If they do, then we could get that information through the state agency. But I tend to doubt that they require that level of detail. And this, of course, you know, we're not even taking into consideration the fact that the Bureau of Cannabis Control at the state level is currently contemplating proposed permanent regulations that would in part prohibit local jurisdictions from prohibiting delivery, which would essentially take delivery entirely out of local control. There's a lot of very strong opposition to that, the League of California cities, as you mentioned, some of the state law enforcement entities. So that's still sort of up in the air.
And then there's the other issue of the medical necessity of the product, as some would define as medicine, being delivered to, quote, "a patient," and that side of the argument.
Yes.
So the good news is, this commission doesn't direct the law enforcement activity our City Council does.
That is the good news for this evening, yes.
But it is an issue. And the way this, I mean, it's pretty clear the way it's written. But as you point out, the so-called governing agency of the licensing at the so-called governing agency of the licensing at the state level may or may not take ultimate jurisdiction and authority. All right? So under section five point five six point zero seven zero A two, it talks about qualifying the folks who apply for a license. What about public companies? For instance? For instance, there are public companies in other countries as well that do business in this country. I don't know that they're doing business in California yet, but it's likely they might. How will we deal, under these regulations, how will we deal with public companies in qualifying their officers, directors, all the rest of it through the screening process? Let's just say, for instance, the public company is licensed or has a home office in Montreal. How are we going to facilitate that?
Currently, we implemented, we promulgated and have implemented regulations and policies and procedures to effectuate the application process. And going through that procedure over the last year, year and a half, what we have required is corporations, and thus far they've been closely held corporations, all of the officers have to undergo the background check. And if they're out of state, in addition to the California Department of Justice, we would do an FBI or I guess if we had a Canadian company, would do some sort of an Interpol. We haven't gotten there yet. I guess we'll figure that out when we get there. But our intention is to screen all of the individuals underlying whatever kind of entity it is that's going to hold the license or the CUP or run the business in one form or another.
But we are aware that there are public companies in this business now.
Oh, absolutely. Just not here yet.
Just not here in our jurisdiction. But as long as we, as, you know, we spent a whole lot of time a year and a half ago working through this process. We've spent a couple of meetings now going through this process again. I would hope that we're pretty much through the process by now.
I'd like to think so. Just in that one subsection you were referring to, it does reference the fact that any management personnel responsible for day-to-day operations and any shareholder, partner, member, officer, and/or director, they all have to do the live scan, the background.
And you said shareholders. So if it's a public company, let's say just for instance, I read today where Coca-Cola, for example, is very much interested in getting into that product, whether it be medical or otherwise. So I happen to own shares in Coca-Cola, so I would have to recuse myself from voting on any medical cannabis application wherein officers, or I would have to be fingerprinted as a shareholder, huh?
Frankly, both, as a matter of fact, yeah.
I'm serious.
No, I'm serious too. Now, the shareholder background check is going, again, if it's a closely held corporation, I think that that's, I don't have a problem with that. Obviously, when we get to the level where alcohol, tobacco, soda distributors and all of that kind of stuff start getting into the business, it's a whole nother thing. I do suspect that by the time it rises to those kinds of corporations getting involved, changes are going to have been made at the federal level. So I think we'll burn that bridge when we get to that bridge.
You didn't bring up the word federal, did you?
No, let's say no.
Good. So we have a hearing officer already in place or under five point five six one fifty on the appeal process?
We currently have an administrative, independent administrative hearing officer for other kinds of appeal hearings. I don't know whether we would use the same person or not. It might be, I think we'll have to play that by ear. He's an excellent officer with some of our other administrative citations and the like. It may end up being that the cannabis thing is sort of so specialized that we might want to get somebody from one of the arbitration panels or one of the administrative judges or something like that. I think we'll start with the officer that we have and we'll see how that works.
So last time we were together, we talked about the manufacture of the product and the extraction, potential extraction methods, which may be considered by some as hazardous. And I asked through some emails to talk about what special occupancy inspection for these types of products. I understand we have a representative of the Fire Department here to share with us tonight. I also wanted to talk about levels of occupancy on a future, a subsequent, I should say, agenda item, but if we can just invite whomever it is. Is it Mr. Chapin, is it? And I don't know your ranks, or are you a?
I'm a fire inspector at the LA County Fire Department.
Mr. Chapin, welcome and thank you.
Thank you for having me, Chairman and Commissioners as well and the rest of the audience. I didn't necessarily expect to fully speak on everything that's involved in cannabis relating to the state regulation stuff. Ours is basically, what I was presenting was the businesses that are operating in Los Angeles County or in, obviously, Lancaster.
Could you give us kind of an overview on how, what the Fire Department does and how they interact with proposed applicants and their facilities?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We have, as LA County Fire Department, we have developed our Regulation Thirty based on the California state regulations and based on the California Fire Code, California Building Code, National Fire Protection Agency, and the International Fire Codes as well. And we've also, we've adapted and adopted from LA County's current fire protection regulations certain things that need to be put in place. As you were talking about just a moment ago, they will, some of these businesses do intend to use volatile liquids and, or flammable liquids to extract oils from the cannabis plants themselves. So that is something that we are, as the Fire Department, responsible for. We have to mitigate and minimize all the fire hazards in these businesses that intend to cultivate or extract oils from their cannabis product. And so with that, we do have regulations. I think you've all received a copy of our Regulation Thirty. And our Regulation Thirty is the regulation that outlines what these businesses need to follow through with. They need to have in place as far as safeties, ventilation, the alarms, the alarm systems, entrance and exits of the buildings that they're intending to use, sprinkler systems, alarm systems, everything that's involved in normal building operation for any other building, those are all requirements as well. But the biggest thing for these cannabis businesses is to ensure that they're using safe practices in their cultivation and extraction methods.
So the VOCs that they may be using, that would be like propane?
Yes, sir.
And those types of flammable?
There are two different types of volatile organic compounds that they're using. They're using propane and butane. And propane and butane are used to extract the oils under pressure from the cannabis plant itself. And then many of these companies now are starting to use these, the larger businesses are starting to use a closed-loop extraction system where they have a propane-sized, you know, like your barbecue cylinder. They'll use one of those or maybe a little bit larger to use the propane and push it through the plant product itself under pressure and temperature. They, with the propane and the butane, it strips off the oils off of the plant itself. Then, so it'll go through this process, extract all the oils, it'll pull the oils back out, put those in a collection vessel, they'll collect that oil, and then the operators will take that oil and then further clean that oil by, they call it winterization. They take the oils themselves and what they've gotten out of the plants and they put it through another process, either through a rotary evaporator that they use ethanol in, that's another flammable liquid that they use in their processes. So they'll use that as well to remove the final traces of propane and butane off the plant themselves. Then they can further refine that by putting them in vacuum ovens, pulling out the remaining ethanol or butane or propane, whatever may also be in the oils themselves. Then they take that oil and that's what they use for production and sales of edibles. They infuse edibles with that oil. And you were talking medicinal and/or adult use. And I think, from what I've understood, is Lancaster is allowing both. Is that correct?
Only medical medicinal, yeah.
Only medicinal side. So with that being the case, they're going to take out the CBD oil, which is the non-psychoactive oil. And there's two different oils that they can extract off of these plants. They can take off the THC, which is the psychoactive. Everybody's heard of THC before. The concentrations of current THC with their processes that they're using now are very high. So they're making a very potent product. CBD oil is the medicinal side. And so with the medicinal side of things, they're still using the same processes, they're taking out, stripping off the oils off the plant. But what they're doing, they can, the CBD, it has the healing properties for a variety of different ailments. And obviously, it's not federally approved, it's not FDA-approved, I should say. And so these products, as it is the case with all of California, are, you know, it's patients basically using their own risk. But I know that come the end of this year, they're going to propose new regulations in the state of California to regulate and to track and trace the various products that are going to be out there. So they will track the product from the cultivation side. That's something that I haven't spoken on, but the cultivation side is another aspect, obviously, aspect of this business. They have to have the cultivation, they have to have the plants to do the extractions. So...
So what happens to, what happens to the VOCs?
So the VOCs...
At the end of the extraction process, are they recycled? Are they burnt off?
So with this, in the closed-loop extraction system, they recycle a lot of the propane and butane that's going through the system itself. The part that's off-gassing, the part that could cause the flammability factor, is the product, the end product, the end oils, will have trace amounts of propane and butane. They're not at, you know, they're not at huge quantities or huge levels, so it's not very dangerous overall. I was trying to think of a word to kind of go with that. But it does pose a threat, but it's not a large threat. It's kind of at a minimal level.
So with a closed ventilation system?
Yes.
That we require by ordinance?
Yes.
And design, how then are these potential flammable devices, how are they vented on a closed system?
Well, these extraction rooms, they're C1, D1, which is an explosive room. If anything explodes, everything in the room should be able to, it should be explosion-proof, basically. They have one-hour firewalls, they have, their electrical systems are rated for those types of rooms. So the electrical systems themselves are sealed, everything is, should be sealed in the room. There will be alarm systems that will make sure they're in place. And because of these gases, they're heavier than air, they will tend to sink and go to the floors. We will have, that part of our regulation is that they must have alarm systems attached to these sensors that are approximately twelve inches from the floor. And these sensors will alarm at twenty-five parts per million, or twenty-five, correction, twenty-five percent of the lower explosive or lower flammability level. So they will, we're keeping it down so it'll alarm at a low rate, so it won't be, it won't build up to dangerous levels, I should say.
Thank you for taking the opportunity to come in and explain that and break it down for us.
Yes, ma'am.
And you addressed butane, ethanol. Where does hexane come into play? It sounds like there's an escalation.
You know, it does, right? Hexane sounds more of a, you know, like a, wow, you know, a different kind of chemical. A lot of people aren't using it because it's not as effective as propane and butane. Propane and butane are the most effective ways to strip off the oil compounds that are on these plants. Hexane is going to a different level, but it's just background, it's a little more costly, and it's just more difficult to obtain than propane and butane. And the, you know, it's really cost prohibitive for the people that plan on doing these operations. The, you know, there are multiple ways of extracting these oils off the plants. Some businesses can choose to use carbon dioxide, so that's a system that's under heavy pressure. They pressurize it, it's a long-term system, it takes eight to ten hours to extract the oils off the plant. Some are using ethanol, which is another way to, basically, they strip it under cold temperatures, they can strip off these, off the crystals, what they call the trichomes or terpenes, off the plant themselves. They can do various different ways. But the most economical in what these businesses are intending to do is propane and butane, so they have to do that. They do that to get the highest yield. I think they get, I'm going to say eighteen to twenty percent yield out of the plants themselves.
From a safety perspective, is any more dangerous or less than the other?
Hexane, no. It's held to the same maximum allowable quantities for these businesses that intend to use an extraction facility.
When you say quantities, you're talking about the volume of butane or?
Yes, the volume of butane or, right, we do have in California state regulation and LA County fire regulation, we do have maximum allowable quantities. And that is one hundred and fifty pounds of aggregate of propane and butane in the building. Then outside, they can also have, they can actually double that in outside storage, but mainly, they're looking at fairly low quantities overall, so it's not a huge explosion or huge flammability risk, I should say. It is. I'm not saying that it's not, but it is. It's not as, it's not as big as some people may think in, you know, in terms of, there's other businesses out there that have far more, far greater quantities of product. Then that changes their building classification or their group classification. These are all, all the cannabis-related businesses are going to be in F1 group occupancy. And the F1 group is basically a factory that can manufacture different industrial products and still maintain a certain level of hazardous materials or hazardous flammability or hazardous products in their building.
Thank you. That addresses my question.
Yes, ma'am.
From a, being transparent, from more of a safety perspective, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't, as a city, that we were cognizant of the fact of which was worse than the other, so, if it were, so. But thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned F1, and that would be your typical industrial operation, for instance?
Yes, sir.
Can you give us some comparative for instances? If that's a word?
My goodness. It's any type of manufacturing that they may have... My goodness, uh it's any type of manufacturing that they may have, uh volatile compounds, uh furniture, factory, um any, yeah, manufacturing of any products, you know, if, say, you know, say it's a.
How about B, how about BYD, are they an F one?
Uh, I'm sorry, what is that, sir?
BYD?
I don't know what that is, I'm sorry, sir.
Oh, okay.
Yes, excuse me, yes, it would be a F one occupancy.
So when I looked at the occupancy level, there's an H occupancy as well comparatively. How would you compare it? Um what what would go in an H occupancy is a, which is the higher level and more dangerous, right?
Yes, H occupancy, um they are not allowed to operate in that space. Um cannabis is limited to F one occupancies only, sir.
By code?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you touched on the uh was the word explosive room?
Yes, that's what what is rated as a C one, D one, class one, division one room or class one, there's another classification, class one, division two. Uh the class one, division one room is where we only allow the equipment to to extract oils. There should not be any other operations, no um, no hot plates, no nothing that could cause a spark or flame within that room. It's strictly the the equipment.
So part of the plan check process, I mean, obviously, we've we've seen the the list of agencies that review uh applications for development in our community. Fire department is always one of them, however, the the level of review in the case of this type of a use, an F one use, uh is a much higher review if compared to a residential project, for instance. I mean, you you, there's still lots of steps you go through, lots of uh elements you'd look at.
Yes, there are, yes, and and our plans, uh plans checkers in the Lancaster office are they're becoming more versed in looking at the cannabis operations and that's part of our role in our my unit is the special occupancy inspection unit, uh within LA county fire prevention, uh LA county fire department's fire prevention unit. And so they refer to us with questions pertaining to our, uh as you have there the regulation thirty and our Form thirty Charlie, anything that they've received in their plans, uh plans unit, then they will refer to us, they will say, you know, they will ask us if there's something that stands out or something they have a question about, then they will, um they'll come to us for that, but.
And you.
But yes, you're right.
You interface with uh Mr. Bennett's office here in in the city, our plan check um building and safety folks.
Yes, sir.
City engineers office.
They're they're a a integral part of of what the the plans checking process is. Uh they, they're essentially the the first line, then, you know, they have to get through uh your building uh building and safety first before they come to us.
I see.
So, and then they they are required to submit plans to our main planning office down in in Rick and Barker or Commerce off of Rick and Barker down there, so they have to.
You charge a fee for your service?
Yes, sir, but we, I don't have the fee totals myself, uh but we do charge fees.
I hope you charge enough.
Where.
I don't think we do, I I hope you do.
It's, yes, it's, it goes by scale, sir.
All right, very good, any other questions for me? All right. Thank you, Mr. Chapin, I really appreciate your being here and and uh at this late hour for you, you probably are off shift by now, huh?
Yes, sir, but that's okay, I I think this was an important uh important issue to address, sir.
I think it 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 is a very important issue, but it's um not a whole lot different than most other industrial operations in our community.
Yes, sir.
It it, just a very, it's a very narrow, unique kind of business.
Yes, it raises a lot of questions and and they're still, we're still trying to answer a lot of stuff that we're, we have questions on, so.
But nothing gets by you, right?
No, shouldn't, sir.
Perfect.
Doesn't come, doesn't, uh they don't get their business started unless it comes through us.
And then you do periodic ins- you don't, but I um either the local station or the uh the lo- uh will do periodic inspections of the operation, right?
Actually, sir, that's why our unit was formed, is we are the inspectors of these cannabis units. So that it's a separate unit, we're from from Lancaster to Linwood and and everything in between.
Very good, how often are, how often are these facilities inspected?
Uh well, to answer that question, they are, there are no cannabis operations working in California or in Los Angeles county right now. Uh the closest with with plan approval is uh a facility here in Lancaster and so they've they've gotten approval, they're starting to work on their build out and they're gonna go through that process, once they've gotten everything built, then we will do the first inspection on sprinklers, alarms, safety, et cetera.
It's a facility on Yuck, I believe.
No, sir.
No?
It's uh Onion, it's uh on uh, what was the street?
Trevor?
Trevor, uh. Yes, uh I I I'm sorry, I didn't have the address, but but yes.
All right, very good.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much for being here tonight, thank you. In section seventeen forty-three ninety, on page thirteen, it talks about paragraph B, about the fifth line down, talks about obtaining prior written approval of the city and planning commission. So if there's a modification to the licensed premises under that title, is that the intent?
If there is a material modification, that that would need to go through the formal uh modifica- CUP modification request process and that does come before planning commission, yes.
So so how do we define material?
There are some descriptions of what constitute material changes further down in that subsection. It's not limited to those kinds of changes, but they include those. Um particularly with respect to security or changing of interior walls, partitions, those kinds of things. Um if there were going to be um i- if there were going to be a change to the to the uses themselves, in other words, if somebody who was approved for cultivation now wanted to do manufacturing, that's not a change to the premises per se, but that too would have to go through the process.
So there's a potential that we'll be then hearing modification hearings? It's not an administrative function, it's a commission function?
If it's material, it will, it will be going through planning commission. If if it's something that that staff and the development services director and and Ms. De La Cruz consider not to be material, then it could be done at the staff level. But anything subst- you know, seriously substantive, we would want to bring before you.
No, you're talking about a, you know, a change in a wall or a uh entryway or a doorway or, I mean, these are typical TIs.
Um. Yeah, if I could just, if I could interject, I think the the idea behind it is if it's if it is an intensification of the use or if it's something a little bit more significant and larger, then it would come back to the planning commission. But it would first be vetted by the planning staff to make that determination.
Perhaps we need to set a threshold on what those changes would be and what, how significant.
Yeah, this is pretty broad, I mean, the way I read it, that nearly everything would come back to us.
Yeah. We could certainly do that in in the additional regulations that we'll be promulgating. Um if you prefer it to be codified, we we can discuss that. I it it might, I mean, it might be something that makes more sense to just um develop at the regulation level rather than rather than the municipal code as as we've done a number of the other um processes for application review and approval.
But we don't, we don't know what those regulations are, all we're addressing are the two codes. We don't, we don't know how it's administered, all all we have before us is the way it's written and how to interpret that. So I'm frankly struggling a little bit with it. I don't, I don't know that I want it back.
Well, you can certainly, you can certainly make that make that decision this evening if you'd like. Just FYI, that's language from the original ordinance.
No, I, I know that.
Interestingly.
But since nothing has has been in operation or any modifications been made to an existing operation, that's what this addresses, right?
Yes.
Okay, so if I'm gonna, if I'm an operator of a facility and I wanna move a door, change change an ingress or egress to a clean room or to a whatever, um drying room or whatever, the way I read this is, has come back before the planning commission on a modification of the conditional use permit, which then also tells me that any application for a conditional use permit, every single approval that we make includes the entire tenant improvement plan. No modifications, once we approve it, that's the way it is, the way I read this.
Again, if you would like to discuss that subsection this evening, that would be fine. I I'm I'm open to however you would like to proceed with regard to that. I understand your concern about having to look at every single little thing, I totally, I understand that. And and however you wanna proceed is is perfectly fine, of course. I don't know about the rest of the commission, but I'm seeing shades of all the tentative track maps that we've had to revisit over the last, I don't know, eighteen to twenty-four months. And I think that. I think that the chair is probably seeing shades of that as well, so I also, I I agree with with the chair. We we need to, they need to have to define it or we have to define it, in my mind, but I'd like to hear from the other commissioners.
Well, I think the fact that Ms. Delacruz uh indicated that it would be vetted by the planning commission, I like to hear, or the planning department, I would like to hear more about that, I mean, how do you envision that vetting?
The way that looks and feels like, and it's it, it happens now already with those projects or applications that have received a conditional use permit in the past, typically we'll get a call from the applicant, the developer, um we'll set some time to go over their request. Um they'll come in and show us their deviations or their modifications to their site plan and admittedly, if it is a wall that's shifting three inches, staff does not believe that that's substantial enough to go before the planning commission through a public hearing. If it is a change such as an alteration that would increase the square footage, that would substantially alter an approved facade, um something that's a little bit more of more visible, something that it that would impact aesthetics that were previously approved, then those types of revisions that are substantial in nature, we would then recommend that they go back to the planning commission to review. And so that's really the vetting and how that works.
Thank you.
Well, I don't know, don't wanna be appear argumentative, but that's not the way this is written. The specific words call out things like doors and walls, I mean, it's what it says. So if we need to, I don't, I don't know.
So can the language be changed to indicate that it would?
Certainly it can, but here, you know, here we are at at the suggestion of an adoption. We we're not obliged to adopt this tonight.
You're not obliged to, I would just like to call your attention and I I do understand, I do understand your concerns. What I, what I would like to point out to you, however, is that when we're talking about the addition, sealing off, or relocation of a wall, common entryway, doorway, or other means of public ingress and or egress, it really is sort of limiting it to changes in structure that 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 might impact public safety in terms of the public perception of what the business is or the public's ability to enter or exit the facility or the structure, it's the premises or the structure itself.
So what about pub- public health, safety and welfare? So the in- internal circulation as it relates to the the people that work there are public, are the public, right? They're, or they're not considered the public if they work there? So the internal operation, circulation, um is not a health and safety and welfare issue?
No, it is, if there's going to be a wall change that somehow potentially impacts an employee's ability to safely proceed through the structure to get out in the event of a fire, that would be material. I I mean, even if you're just moving a wall a little bit, if it potentially impacts that, I would consider that material.
Typically, what happens when we have a hearing, we rely on the various departments, uh including building and safety and engineering and planning and all the rest to evaluate projects and and when they're recommended for approval, all those reviews have taken place, all those safety issues, all that has taken place. So I'm just you know, a a material change of a it just, it just seems contradictory to me based on the way we have operated for years here.
Okay, I'm, a- and I and I understand where your concerns are, I'm just not quite sure I mean, even if you were to continue this matter, I'm not sure how you want me to fix it.
I'm not either, I'm not either.
Chairman Vos, if I could also add, I I believe um the intent of this section was with respect to the fees that are required to be paid. Um as I interpret this section, it does say that a medical cannabis facility shall not make physical change, alteration or modification um from the plans approved by the city and or planning commission without paying the fee established by resolution. And then it goes on to define what those may include. I believe the original intent and the spirit of the section was respect to the fees. Now, again, if you would like us to go back and reconsider this section, then we can do so with some direction.
The next section on that bottom of that page and carrying to the next page talks about the setbacks. So after what we've heard from the fire department, are we comfortable with the current setbacks that are in the ordinance?
I'm sorry.
In existing ordinance?
Are you referring to the distance requirements?
Yeah, distance or setbacks from other uses. Religious assembly, private and public schools, colleges, universities, daycare centers, residential or residentially designated property, public parks.
Well, let let, just speaking for myself, I nothing that I've heard from the fire department, including this evening, but even prior to this, has led me to believe that these are too short or need to be lengthened, need to, we need to have more distance. The the system and the rooms and the the internal processes that that the fire department is overseeing, it appears to be controlled enough in their estimation that it's really going to be controlled within the room, if not just the structure, so I don't, I I I haven't heard anything that makes me.
No, I think the reality of it is, is there's other F one uses that are co-terminous with a whole lot of these identified.
Yeah.
Um separation distance uses.
Yes.
There are a lot closer and a lot potentially more risky.
Yes, I think that's true, I mean, Inspector Chapin was having trouble coming up with examples, but like a furniture finishing or a furniture manufacturing, that could be anywhere, practically anywhere, so I would agree with that.
Right.
Sir, I would, I would assume that it's based on the nature of the product itself, they wanna keep it away from from the schools and institutions.
That's how we identified it originally.
Yeah, I didn't know if I was stepping out out of bounds on that one, but I think.
No, no, I, no, you're correct, but the reason it was identified, those distances were established initially were based on recommendations that we heard and adopted ultimately. I didn't have any um concern, safety concern, particularly for the, you know, the the potential hazard. It's just the perceived use, I think.
Yes, sir. What's the current, is it 600 feet circumference or 600?
600, well, and the way we measure is.
Yeah, it's 600 feet.
The way we measure is.
So basically 1,200.
Yeah, the way we measured is different than you might measure it.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, our, our methodology is not the way the fire department does it.
Okay. Understand. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. So we're satisfied with that distancing? Okay. All right. Anything further? Anything further from anyone? All right. Don't remember what page this is on, hold on. Page 10, 1743-110. A4, A paragraph four. Talks about cannabis, medical cannabis shall occur within a closed locked structure that shall not exceed 22,000 square feet of canopy area. All cultivation of medical cannabis outdoors within the city is prohibited. I raise the issue in question about greenhouses, although, and how they qualify as under this description as a structure. If I understood correctly, everything's got to be F1 for medical cannabis operations. Am I hearing that right?
That is correct.
Warren?
That is correct.
Everything's got to be F1.
Yes, the grow and manufacture and extraction would all be F1.
Growth, everything?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. All right. That's all I have. So... If we're done with this, I'll close the public hearing without objection and consider a motion.
I'll move that we adopt resolution number 18-28 recommending to the city council approval of an amendment to chapters 5.56 and 17.43 of the Lancaster municipal code relating to the regulation of cannabis cultivation and manufacturing facilities.
Thank you. One second. Thank you. All right. Anything further from anyone? Please vote.
Motion passes six, zero.
Thank you.
And with that, Ms. Corbett, thank you for your patience with us as we've gone through this long journey again.
You're welcome, and I appreciate your thoroughness. I think it's good that we asked and answered the questions as, as much as we're able to.
All right, thank you. All right, as I mentioned earlier, item number three will move to the end of the agenda after item number eight. So we're now into new public hearings. The new public hearing, item number four, so without objection, the public hearing is open on general plan amendment number 1803, zone change number 1803, and conditional use permit 1805. We have speakers on this item?
There are no speakers.
Well, we want to hear staff report anyway. Ms. Swain?
Chairman, Vos and commissioners, what you have before you tonight is a conditional use permit, general plan amendment and zone change for a medical cannabis cultivation and manufacturing facility on approximately 15 acres located at 43511 70th Street East. The proposed project consists of the construction and operation of a medical cannabis cultivation and manufacturing facility and would utilize the existing facilities on the property along with constructing an additional building. The proposed project would total approximately 122,871 square feet and would be developed in three phases. Phase one consists of the renovation of 27,781 square feet of the existing produce packing cold storage building for the cultivation of medical cannabis. Phase two would consist of the construction of an approximately 54,600 square foot greenhouse type building for the cultivation of medical cannabis. And phase three would consist of the renovation of the remaining 40,490 square feet of the existing produce packing cold storage facility. This phase would be predominantly for the cultivation of medical cannabis, however, approximately 1,560 square feet would be dedicated to the manufacturing of medical cannabis products with an extraction room, processing facilities and office. A recessed truck well and loading dock are located on the south side of the parking lot adjacent to the building. Located along the southern property line is a domestic water tank, fire storage tank, water well and trash enclosure. A drainage basin is located at the northeast corner of the property, and these existing improvements will remain with the implementation of the proposed project. The existing produce packing and cold storage facility will finish out the current contracts and then cease to operate on the project site. The project site is currently surrounded with a chain link fence. This fence will be replaced with a block wall as required by the municipal code, and a wrought iron gate will control access to the project site. Access will be provided from a driveway which is located off of 70th Street East. This driveway will be paved and lead to an improved parking lot adjacent to the existing building. Landscaping will be provided throughout the parking lot. The proposed development would have an odor control system to prevent any cannabis odors from being detectable outside of the facility. The air purifying system would purify all outgoing air using a ventilation system comprised of HVAC ducting, exhaust fans, negative pressure and carbon filters. The ventilation system will be made up of sealed ducting, filters and exhaust fans. All rooms will be negatively pressurized to further reduce the chance of odors escaping the building. The filtration system will consist of carbon scrubbers and fans with a cubic feet per minute rating of 969. The fans have the dual benefit of cooling the overhead cultivation lamps and pulling air into the exhaust systems and then pushing it through large can filter brand activated carbon filters. Air that leaves the building is odorless. The filters have a one-year lifespan and would be replaced as needed. In order, sorry. In order to allow for the cultivation and, and manufacturing facility, a general plan amendment and zone change is required to change, change the current designation on the property from non-urban residential to light industrial and from RR 2.5 or rural residential with a minimum lot size of two and a half acres to light industrial, as cannabis cultivation and manufacturing facilities are only allowed, allowed in the industrial zones. The city's medical cannabis cultivation facilities ordinance also establishes distance requirements between medical cannabis cultivation facilities and uses identified as sensitive uses. These distances are measured from the corner of the cannabis facility to the nearest property line of the sensitive use. A medical cannabis facility shall not be located within 600 feet of a religious assembly, residential use or residentially designated property, a public park or within 1,000 feet of a public or private school, college or university or daycare. The project site is not within the separation distance requirements of any of the identified sensitive uses with the exception of residentially designated property. All of the property immediately adjacent to the project site is zoned as RR 2.5, which is a residential zone. However, this property is vacant. Two single-family residents are located in close proximity, one approximately 800 feet to the west and one approximately 1,000 feet south. As such, the applicant is requesting a waiver from the separation distance requirements. An initial study was prepared for the proposed project, and it was circulated for a 30-day public review and comment period beginning August 15th and ending September 14th. A total of three comment letters were received on the project. One from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, one from the Antelope Valley Air Quality Management District, and one from Better Neighborhoods, which is a community organization based out of Irvine. The issues raised by these letters, and I'll go through them relatively quickly, and if you would like expansion, I'll expand even further. The air district raised three primary issues: desk control, asbestos and cultivation and manufacturing permits. With respect to desk control, the project would be required to comply with Rule 403, which is the desk control regulations for the air district in all of their construction and operational activities. This is a standard requirement. With this, respect to asbestos, when tenant improvements are done in a building, the air district requires proof of either the absence of asbestos containing materials or if they're, they're present, they're required to be abated. This, the building on the site was built in 2003. The use of asbestos containing materials have been prohibited since the end, the late 1970s. The likelihood of this building containing any asbestos is slim to none. However, the same requirements would apply and they would have to submit proof to the air district in order to get their, their tenant improvement permits. California Fish and, Fish and Wildlife submitted comments pertaining to two primary issues, the first one being wildlife species, the second one being groundwater. With respect to wildlife species, the project site is completely barren of vegetation. It's hard packed dirt, DG, there is no habitat for any species on the site, including burrowing owls or Mojave ground squirrels. This, the project is conditioned to comply with all rules and regulations, but there is no biological impact associated with operations on the site. With respect to groundwater, and I will address this a little bit later also, the project site is on a well that underwent part of the adjudication process. That well is permitted to extract a given amount of water. It will not be exceeding that. The water pumped from the groundwater well is under the control of the water master. And there is no, they're not going to exceed what they're currently, currently permitted to take, and it won't affect any wildlife species. The other comment letter that was received came from the Better Neighborhoods group, and they had a variety of issues. The first one being the project's compliance with the general plan. And they specifically state that the, the proposed project does not comply with all policies of the general plan. That's not the intent of a general plan. The general plan outlines goals, policies and objectives for the city, and it governs a multitude of types of developments and the vision of the city. So the policies and objectives that an industrial development is going to comply with are going to be different than those that would comply, that a residential development or a commercial development might comply with. This project is consistent with the intent of the general plan. Specifically, they bring up groundwater resources, groundwater basin, which I, I talked about. They also talk about the project's compliance with recycled water. The nearest recycled water line runs down Division. It runs from the sanitation district down Division Street to Avenue K, over West on Avenue K, down, down 10th Street West to Lancaster City Park. Uses that are currently on recycled water are the city park, there's the cemetery that's on it, there's the ability to use recycled water at the landfill. I don't know if they're using that or not. But the recycled water lines don't run out to 70th Street East, and it's not feasible to require a project or a development out this far to comply with using recycled water. It's not available to them at this time. At some point in the future, if recycled water is run out there and they were doing improvements, they would be required to comply with it, but at this time, it's not an option for them. They also talk about encourage the incorporation of energy conservation measures in existing and new structures. All new structures and alternate improvements are required to comply with Title 24 and the California Building Code. That's state law, but it's not optional, it's not something that I can condition them to do. They're already doing it. With respect to electricity and GHGs, the proposed project will generate minimal air emissions. These air emissions are primarily from their construction activities. Everything is contained inside. Electricity will run to the site. If they need additional electricity that Edison cannot comply with or can, Edison cannot supply, then they can include things like solar panels on their facility, or they can do the necessary upgrades to bring additional power to the project site. But at this time, there appears to be sufficient power to generate the facility to do what the proposed applicant wishes to do. With respect to greenhouse gas emissions, the air district's threshold for greenhouse gas emissions is 548,000 pounds of greenhouse gases per day. That's a huge number of greenhouse gases that no project that we've currently had actually meets that minimum threshold. This, this is substantially smaller than, substantially smaller than any project than the project would need to be in order to meet that threshold. They also bring up issues with respect to, to pollutants and toxics, specifically high intensity discharge light bulbs because they contain mercury. Many products that we use in business and in households contain mercury. Specifically, common universal waste, electric lamps include but are not limited to fluorescent, compact fluorescent lights, high intensity discharge, neon mercury vapor, high pressure sodium and metal halide lamps. These are all considered universal wastes, and they have disposal requirements that go with them, and the developer would be required to comply with them. Very similar to you removing the fluorescent lights in your kitchen. Those can't be thrown away, they have to be taken to someplace that recycles them. A business that uses those types of lamps or lights is required to dispose of them with manifests and send them to a recycler. The proposed applicant has chosen to use Safety Clean, which is a company that deals with the disposal of hazardous materials and hazardous wastes. It, I believe is in your environmental plan that I provided you at the, at the dais. Waste water discharge, there'll be minimal amounts of waste water discharge. There is an active septic system on the site. It would continue to be utilized for the restroom facilities, the break rooms, et cetera. The wa, the water used for the watering of the cannabis plants within the facility, would we be recycled to the extent possible and discharged as needed to the septic system? The discharge of that water is regulated by the Regional Water Quality Control Board and the Department of Public Health. They also bring up issues with, with respect to crime and impact on public services. The safety plan for cannabis facilities are reviewed by, by the cannabis committee when they first come in and are deemed acceptable prior to them coming down to planning for processing as part of their use permit. Under, under this, under SEQA, crime is not an environmental impact. SEQA views the potential impacts associated with crime from the standpoint of if a project increases crime to a level that requires the construction of an additional public safety facility such as a new sheriff station or an outlined sheriff station, and those, the, the construction. and those, the construction impacts would cause significant environmental impacts. That's when SEQA views crime or public safety as an environmental issue. From the planning commission's perspective, you have the ability to take crime or the potential increase in crime into consideration as part of your deliberation process. And public health, in terms of what they're talking about, including increases in hospitalization, exposure to children, workplace accidents, impaired drivers, and increased traffic deaths, that's not a, an environmental issue that typically gets looked at. Issues such as exposure to children, minors aren't allowed on the property. That actually is part of the cannabis ordinance. Increases in hospitalizations, workplace accidents, impaired drivers, and increased traffic, that's, that's subjective in assuming that the cannabis grown at this facility for medical purposes is the cause, and you aren't required to look at the worst-case scenario in terms of all of these impacts. I will answer any questions that you may have. I do know that the applicant is here, many members of their team, and they can answer any questions you may have also.
I think we'll hear from the applicant before we address everything you've talked about. If that's all right with everyone? Who is the applicant? It says here-
So, the applicant for the general plan amendment and zone change is Calandry Properties. The applicant for the use, the use permit is Tradecraft Ventures.
So, who are we going to hear from first? I don't see a Calandry standing there.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is David Leventhal. I'm an attorney for the selling applicant, which is K70 LLC, which is-
Good evening, Mr. Leventhal, and welcome.
Thank you. And I do represent K70, and which, of course, is owned by John Calandry and Shannon Calandry.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, Council, Commission Members. David Dejute, I'm representing, I'm an attorney. I represent the applicant for the CUP.
Oh, I see, all right. And I didn't hear your name clearly?
My first name's David. My last name is Dejute, D-E-J-U-T-E.
All right, thank you.
I'm not sure how to interpret those eyebrows raised, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure how to interpret those eyebrows raised.
No, that's all right. Pronunciation-
I see.
When you get old and you can't hear very well, and you buy the best hearing aid you can get, sometimes it just doesn't work.
I'm getting very close there myself.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman-
Good evening.
Commissioners, James Henshaw. I work as an application consultant for Tradecraft Ventures.
All right, good, thank you, you're welcome. All right. So, you've heard, you're welcome to tell us whatever you want to tell us. If you don't want to tell us anything, we may ask you a few questions. So, if you have something you want to share with us about this facility.
I'll just say that we'll respond to questions. I think that Ms. Swain did an excellent job of explaining the desirability and mitigation measures and compliance. Any one of us are here to answer whatever questions you might have.
So, you were here, you guys were here and heard the comments from the fire inspector relative to the operation, and from what I understand, you folks are involved in other counties in operations of similar nature?
That's right, Mr. Chairman. We were here for the prior matter, and we heard the officer from the inspectors from the fire department. We've been working with Ms. Swain, and we do operate other facilities. You know, from my perspective, I have a couple dual roles. I'm a former Assistant United States Attorney, so public order, safety, doing things correctly and by law is very important to me. And the only reason I am willing to work with these applicants is because of the assurance that I've received, that they want to do everything properly. The complaint that I hear so often is that, you know, Pastor Hagan mentioned it, the deleterious effects that this can have on the community. Respectfully, although that may be true, the City of Lancaster has chosen to regulate this, I believe wisely, because I think with regulation, you have a much greater control over who's doing what. The applicant in this instance encourages regulation. They want to be inspected by the fire department. They don't want minors on the property. They do want to do everything. They do want to pay taxes. And so, they have roots in Lancaster. I just, it's not me, they. You could not ask for a better applicant than these people.
All right, thank you. There may be some questions from members? Go ahead.
If I may, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I just wanted to respond a little bit about the fire safety that was brought up by our firemen over here. When we filled out the application for the City of Lancaster, we went into extreme detail, and we hired what we felt was the best of the best for the job. For our safety plan, we hired Lath Dowd, who wrote an intricate safety plan. He originated it, developed it specifically for this location here in Lancaster. He's a seventeen-year veteran of the Los Angeles Fire Department, and he's got a very extensive resume and list of qualifications that make him what we felt was the best choice. We did the same thing with our, with our security plan. Dan Perez is a former detective for the Los Angeles Police Department for over twenty years, and now heads up the number-one security company for cannabis-regulated companies in Los Angeles and other counties. So, we feel that we've, we've reached out to the best of the best to help us with our application and with what our goals are, which is to successfully operate in the City of Lancaster. Thank you.
Very good. Any questions from anyone? Go ahead.
One more time, I apologize. I wanted to stand up because everyone else stood up, and I felt like a skateboarder.
You felt like you should? So, you're one of those kind of guys that goes to a meeting and you can't, just can't hold back?
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Oh, right. What's your name, sir?
My name is Barry Walker, and I'm half of Tradecraft Ventures, and the other half is sitting over there, my brother. We are a family-operated business, and we flipped a coin to see who would have to get up here, and you know who lost, was me. But I did want to say that, you know, we do have roots in Lancaster. We have been in business for eight years. We have always operated with the most, with the highest level of respect for the law, with the principles and practices. We've, we've been waiting for this day for a long time. We've, we're very excited to be in Lancaster, and I appreciate the consideration, and I'll leave it at that.
All right, very good. Go ahead, Commissioner Moore.
I have a question about the, about the plans. I see that you have a greenhouse, and if I'm not mistaken, Chairman, we have no open, no open cultivation. And when I see a greenhouse, I just think that it's, it's open, because a greenhouse is usually just some glass you can see in it. So, I was just wondering what, why was the, what was the purpose of the greenhouses? Is it a different type of cultivation growing in that section of the area, vice versa?
This might require a few people to answer, because it's many-layered, like an onion. But first of all, the greenhouses today, and especially for cannabis, are much different from the ones that we imagine. They're not just big glass boxes. They are opaque, and they have barriers, either by hedge or by masonry walls and things like that. To answer your question specifically on why, why greenhouses, to compete in the market. We come from indoor growing, and it can cost nine hundred dollars to produce a pound of medical-grade cannabis. Whereas if you go into greenhouse and in a, in a temperate zone like Lancaster, you can produce it for under three hundred. And with the, with the market going where it's going and with the big boys coming in, you have to compete. And so, that is a consideration we've taken. Again, that's why this facility is perfect, because we have the indoor and the possibility of outdoor as well. And so, I might address some of your questions, but-
So, you understand our ordinance is clearly prohibits outdoor cultivation?
Absolutely, a hundred percent, understood.
So, we also have ordinances on the books that relate to our general plan and zoning designations for a design guideline. And when a conditional use permit application comes before us, there is an expectation that those plans would meet at least a minimum of our design guidelines. Can you tell us how these plans meet our design guidelines for an industrial property?
Johnson, would I, I hate to put you on the spot, but it's okay.
Well, it's not up to staff to respond. Staff didn't create the plan. You folks did. So, I, I can ask staff questions, but I'm asking the applicant's question on how the plan before us meets the design guidelines established by the city.
Sir, I'd like to reply to that. Again, we have, we've contracted with NextGen, who is the manufacturer of the greenhouses that we plan on building on the, on the property, and they will build to any specification that you require.
Okay, but the point is, sir, that these plans, as presented, which you all are asking us to approve, do not, in the very least, meet the design guidelines, notwithstanding the quote "greenhouses." You've got two other buildings. You have an existing building. I'm not going to sit here and enumerate the design guidelines for you unless you want me to, but that'd be rather embarrassing, I think.
Of course.
So, what I'm suggesting is that the project before us, at a minimum, does not meet the minimum exterior elevation design guidelines established by this community. So, since it doesn't, can you tell us why we should approve it the way it's submitted?
I'm sorry, I don't have a, I don't have a good answer for that, sir.
Okay, and that, you know, that's an answer.
So, these greenhouses are prefab. I'm Brett Walker.
Good afternoon.
Hi, Brett Walker. I'm part of Tradecraft. These are, these are climate-controlled greenhouses, so they're concrete foundations. There's no air exchange. There's air coming in, but we can control the odor. So, there's no opening of the roof. It's totally closed in. So, if that helps.
Well, we understand what our ordinance is. We just spent two hearings on what our requirements are for medical cannabis cultivation application and how they operate. We're very clear on that. We've spent a lot of hours over the last two years struggling through this process. What I'm talking about, since you folks don't seem to understand, let me share with you. Let me share with you.
Okay. We weren't informed that they weren't- It's a little embarrassing, because we haven't, this is the first we've heard about it. We're all kind of sitting around going, ah, ah, ah. We were under the-
Well, okay, you have, you have a, you have a existing building that was built thirteen, fourteen years ago, maybe? And its purpose was, it's a packing house, processing facility for onions and other products. It was approved, in effect, as an industrial design in an agricultural area. It was done administratively. It was not done before this commission, or a commission. This commission's only been in business ten years. The previous commissions, I can't speak for. Subsequent to that, in two thousand and nine, design guidelines were established for industrial development. You folks are asking us to change the use from an A, or residential or ag use, to industrial use. So, if you're going to change to an industrial use, you then must conform, at least at a minimum, to the design guideline. If you haven't done that, I'd suggest to you at this point that you may want to reconsider what you're asking us to do and get your heads together with staff in the next few days and weeks, and we'll trail this matter.
Chairman Vos. The greenhouse building-
I'm not talking about the greenhouse building. Okay.
Okay, well, the-
I'm talking about the entire project.
Okay, the existing-
Excuse me. Okay? As an industrial development, at a minimum, the building facades must have an articulation to them. Does this building have that? The existing building? The answer is no. Right? So, at a minimum, it doesn't meet the first guideline, and there are others. Now, maybe the other members would like to continue this discussion and consider your application tonight. I, for one, will vote no, based on what I see. Go ahead.
Just trying to figure out what's the best opportunity to settle this the most non-divisive way. I'd hate to see us put a motion forward and not give them the opportunity, but I too, I've read it, I see it, and you know where I am on waivers and the design guideline. So, I'd like to be able to have an opportunity. So, I'd like to know what we can do to mitigate further risk to this being approved. Ms. Swain, do you think you can?
What was that?
I'd like to know what we can do in order to not make, to stop the bleeding. I'm just going to cut to the chase.
So, if the commission would like to, we can condition the project to take the elevations, the exterior elevations to ADC, and have them look at ways that the exterior of the building can be brought more into compliance with the architectural and design standards, the design guidelines. That is, that is one option that you have before you. As this was simply a tenant improvement to an existing building, at least with Phase One and Phase Three, there were no changes proposed. It's a use that currently exists out there, and they were not going to change the basic underlying uses of that building. Yes, it does involve a general plan amendment and zone change, and the building was, was built in two thousand and three, and it met the requirements at the time the building was constructed.
So, at six fifty, Monday, September seventeenth, what can we do to fix where we are today? Ms. Taylor-Cruz?
My recommendation would be to add a condition requiring some improvements to the exterior of the building and have the ADC reviewing confirm those improvements.
Chairman Vos, do-
Negotiating from the dais is a lot of fun, and every time we do it, we get snake-bitten. Right?
Admittedly, yes, sir.
Frankly, I'm, you're asking to change the zoning to a specific change in industrial use. At a minimum, the project must conform. Okay? I hear what you're saying, taking an existing building that was approved fourteen, fifteen years ago administratively, and that's fine, but it's before us as a brand-new use. Okay? It's not a packing house anymore. They're not processing onions. Okay? You're talking about complete site improvements. Talking about building new buildings. You're talking about modifying the interior of these buildings, and you're also, but you're not talking about bringing the look of this building into conformance at a minimum of our industrial standards. Mr. Calandry?
Yes, sir, Mr. Vos.
Hang on a minute.
Yes, sir.
So, that's my, that's my challenge. Now, we can be as business-friendly as we want, but when we slip and slide on minimum standards, it doesn't make me happy. But I'm just one person. Go ahead.
Mr. Vos, it's obvious that we have fallen short on our preparation for coming before the deus tonight, since it is our name on the general plan amendment and the zone change. I'd request that we postpone this till next month, give us a chance to confer with city staff, AV engineering, et cetera, and come back before you guys are more prepared.
Well, you're pretty well-prepared. It's just the design part.
Yes, but that's not a question we're going to be able to answer tonight.
The other thing I would suggest we do, if everyone agrees that, with you, that we should do that, is that we can, we go through all the environmental questions, all the other issues that have been raised tonight, so we can vet those, and then if my colleagues agree, we'll continue it to at least one meeting, or two, depending on how long it's going to take you guys to interact with staff, to make whatever appropriate modifications you deem necessary.
Well, as I know, your suggestions are needed, and we're happy to go after them and get them fixed for you. Apologize for wasting your guys' time tonight. Know this, Chairman Vos, we did spend many hours with the engineering company that we hired, as well as several meetings with city staff, and it's regrettable, to say the least, that we are not prepared for your guys tonight.
It's a very complicated, expensive process.
Yes, sir.
We know it is.
Yes, sir.
And we also know the Calandry family and your history in this community.
Oh, thank you for that.
And, you know, that's all positive, and we want to keep it that way.
Yes, sir, as do I.
All right, thank you. Any other speakers?
There are no speakers on this item.
Let's talk about the issues you brought up. Ms. Wayne, on the active septic system that's currently there.
Correct.
So it's anticipated that Regional Water Quality Control Board then has to interact with the applicant for this specific use to determine whether or not the current onsite septic system is appropriate for their use, or they may need to make modifications to it.
If they need to make modifications, that would be something permitted through the regional board and public health, but I honestly don't anticipate them needing to make modifications. They have the space on the site for a septic system that can adequately serve their buildings.
But that's still a permitted, that's oversight by Regional Water Quality.
That is true.
Okay. This Better Neighborhoods folks, we've seen their communication previously.
Correct.
And their threat of, or actual litigation on projects, right?
That is correct.
Okay. So we want to be very careful in reviewing what they have to say and what our responses are. On their land use and planning, you touched on that on the general plan.
Correct.
However, no disrespect to folks that practice law. Folks that do that oftentimes don't tend to quote the full sentence of our environmental document. In this case, they talk about consistent with the general plan. What they failed to include was the full sentence upon approval of the general plan and zone change. It would be consistent.
That is correct. This use, well, the existing use on the site is also consistent, and obviously, it's allowed in the RO 2.5. It would also be consistent in a heavy industrial, light industrial zone.
Right. So, you have to be careful in reading what the writer says to make sure that they are actually truthful, which in that particular case, they failed to tell the entire story. Talk about the water resource. You touched on the water adjudication matter. So, am I to understand that the water well that's on-site has a capacity or has a level of use that will be sufficient to adequately serve this entire project for its life?
That is, that is correct.
Perfect.
One more thing I should add on that. They talk about District 40 being the water purveyor. The water, the District 40 does not go out that far and is not the water purveyor for this site.
That was Miness' comment. They're so interested in drawing these matters to our attention that they can't even determine that this property isn't within LA County Water Works District by many miles.
That is correct. District 40 provides water to a large portion of the city, but this site is not one of them.
That's for sure. You did, you did touch on recycled water, and that's a matter that you reviewed prior to, when you did your initial study and made a determination that recycled water is not near this site. And I'm not sure that recycled water could be used for the process that, for the manufacturing process in the first place.
I don't know that it can either, because recycled water can be used for many things, including growing crops, but it's typically not used on crops, or at least a portion of the crop that would be consumed. So, for example, you can water orchards because you're not actually watering the fruit, but I don't know that you could use it to water cannabis if you're then going to use the cannabis to derive oils or other, you know, products, if it would meet the medical standards.
LA County Public Health also has to enter into the review of the operation in total, right?
What was that?
LA County Public Health will, also has to review.
It oversees the use of recycled water, so does the sanitation district.
So on their page four, at the last paragraph, talking about wastewater discharge, citing BMP has nothing to do with sanitation, it has to do with.
Stormwater.
Stormwater.
That is correct.
Wonder if these people actually even looked at the application.
Staff was not contacted for any copies of the application or technical studies that were prepared for the project by any member of the public or organization.
So the, the last paragraph on the, on page five, talk, is a number of sightings of case law. Any, any need to respond on any of that? Well, first of all, there's no need to respond in the first place on a, on a, on a mitigated NIGDEC in writing.
That is correct.
So, the only requirement under the law is writing on a environmental impact report.
That is correct.
And they do indicate that, that we should deny the project and direct the preparation of an EIR. However, they don't delineate precisely what they expect an EIR to solve.
So, SEQUEL requires an environmental impact report to be prepared only in instances where you have a potentially significant or significant impact that cannot be mitigated. All of the potentially significant impacts associated with this project are mitigatable, and the commenter did not provide substantial evidence based on fact that there would be a significant impact. Therefore, an EIR is not required.
Talk about California Department of Wildlife, Fish and Wildlife.
So all of the comments that California Department of Fish and Wildlife raised with respect to burrowing owls and mahogany ground squirrel, the entire 15 property, 15 acres of the site is graded, compacted, devoid of vegetation. I don't think you could find a California ground squirrel burrow on the site, which would support either a burrowing owl or a mahogany ground squirrel. There's no habitat on-site for mahogany ground squirrel, so doing trapping isn't warranted or necessary, and the document does contain mitigation measures that would address any impacts that we could potentially have.
Well, CDFW talks about may support. Well, you can make that determination of anything. Anything is may, but there's no studies supporting.
So the.
Actual.
The applicant submitted a biological resources report, which included a survey of the project site and identified the potential for varying species and any issues of concern, and there's nothing on this 15 acres.
What about the raptors?
There would be nothing for the raptors to either nest on or forage on, on the project site. There may be raptors in the area, but they're not utilizing this project site.
And the native plants?
There's no vegetation.
They may not have been visible. That's because there's none there.
That is correct.
So I guess their statement, "They may not have been visible," is true. The fence hazard, you know, I've never seen that in the 10 years I've been on the Planning Commission, on a, on a comment from Fish and Wildlife.
Typically, Fish and Wildlife wants wildlife fencing around properties where the fencing is raised every so many feet.
But that's not what they're calling for here. They're talking about chain-link fence and putting caps on the pipe so they don't become a nesting site.
Well, we're not going to have a chain-link fence.
No kidding? It's block wall, right?
It's going to be block wall. And that actually is required in our code when you have an industrial use next to residentially zone property. So we won't have any tubes that require end caps.
Erin Wilson's been around a while. I think she'd know that.
I don't believe she writes the comment letters. I believe she just signs them.
Okay. You taught, you already talked about water. Stream bed alteration?
We don't have any streams on the site.
It's a mile and a half away, so maybe that's why they include their standard paragraph.
So it's either Big Rock or Little Rock Creek that's located at 50th Street East, but this project wouldn't alter it, nor would it have any impacts to, said during.
Notes? Super. Thank you. So, let me ask the city attorney, Assistant City Attorney. If we considered a motion to adopt the zone change and general plan amendment and continue the conditional use permit, we can do that?
You could, although I don't think it would be advisable. I think it probably is more prudent just to take it all at one time. That would be my recommendation.
Had to ask. All right, thank you. Anything from anybody else? We're clear on the F1 though, right? You guys are shaking your head over there, yes.
Correct, yes. Very clear.
Chairman Vos?
So the, hang on a second. So the, so the question from, the comment from the applicant relative to the greenhouses, those must be an F1 occupancy.
Yes, if he's going to construct it that way, it would need to meet the requirements for.
That what?
It would need to meet the requirements for an F1. And so what that will require is he may have to change the building type from a type five to a type three in order to accommodate that for the size buildings that he's looking at.
So how do you do that with glass?
That's going to be a challenge. I don't know if they can do that, and also meet the energy requirements. So we are Climate Zone 14. We have drastic swings in temperature here, and so you're going to have to cool or heat those, those spaces, and being all glass, it's going to be an issue.
So, there's no other occupancy that we can, that can be considered, other than an F1?
F1 would be it for these, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. If I'm hearing you correctly, I've listened to you discuss all the different aspects of this development. I'm hearing favorable feedback, except for the very first thing that the chairman mentioned with respect to exterior design guidelines, and you gracefully wanted to spare us some level of agony in having all those specified to us. Unfortunately, nothing was communicated to us before this hearing, but I was thinking, perhaps if the chairman or anyone on the, any of the other commissioners had prepared any written notes, that we could get.
No, it's, it's already on the books. It's available on the city's website. The, you know, the proposed application is to reuse, was to reuse the existing building just the way it is. That, that was your application. From my chair, that's, that won't fly. Others may agree with me and may not. I mean, that's entirely up to them. But, but, but the way the application was presented was the way you folks wanted to present it, and that's what's before us. We, we evaluate projects based on the way they're presented. We don't pick sites, nor do we pick applicants, so, you know, it, staff will present, but do not advocate, okay? There's, sometimes folks feel that, gee, if, if staff approves it and moves it forward, that means that staff is in agreement, and that's necessarily the case. Staff is not advocating. They are presenting a project based on the way it's, it's presented to us. So, I'm, I'm sure you'll, you'll be able to understand clearly what our, what our minimum standards are for industrial projects. It's not that complicated, and it's probably not that expensive. It just needs to be addressed, as far as I'm concerned. Others may disagree.
Perhaps, as was suggested earlier, if we could incorporate compliance with those conditions into the approval, if it's not that extensive. It doesn't sound like this is a situation where anybody before the commission would be trying to back the commission into a court.
You've got building designs, you've got building designs that, that.
Good-looking buildings.
I'm skeptical that they'll need an F1 standard, the way they look on paper. So, given that, if we approve it as a conditional use, then staff's got to figure out how to make it work. We'd rather do it the other way around. We'd rather have you present what works, and then we consider the entire application. Nobody up here, unless I'm misreading my colleague, is opposed to the concept and the idea of this application in the first place. I mean, you know, we've approved, what, seven or eight already, and there'll probably be another 15 before we're done. Maybe more. Who knows? Go ahead, sir.
Well, respectfully to David Levitho, he represents the Calandry interest in the zoning change, which Brandon has already requested be postponed for 30 days.
Right.
On behalf of the applicant for the CUP, I'd like to join in that request, and we will address with staff the minimum requirements and meet and exceed those requirements so that by next meeting, ideally, we can earn your approval.
Hopefully, you can get it done that quickly. It might take longer, but hopefully you can.
As soon as we can.
We cycle very quickly. We cycle very quickly. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So we leave the public hearing open and consider a motion to continue. Does somebody care to offer that?
Steph, what would next meeting be, the date?
October fifteenth. With the agenda review, October eighth.
I move, make a motion that we continue the hearing to the October fifteenth regular planning commission meeting.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you. Anything further? Please vote. It's all going to work out just fine.
Motion passes five zero to continue the item.
All right. We'll see you guys back here in a couple, a few weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you to staff, too.
Item five. Item five is a new public hearing on conditional use permit eighteen oh four. Pardon? Well, I guess we're going to take a five-minute break. We'll start with the next public hearing, which was conditional use permit eighteen fourteen, Life Source Preparatory Preschool. Do we have speakers on this?
There are no speakers on this item.
Anyone care to hear the staff report? Anyone? Want to wave it? Yes? All right, wave the staff report then. And since we have no speakers on this, we'll close the public hearing without objection. Consider a motion. Go ahead.
Just for clarification, before we do that, we're on five. Is that not correct?
Yes, I skipped forward. Sorry about that.
You threw me. Don't test my. And in that case, I move that we adopt resolution number eighteen dash thirty-one, approving conditional use permit number eighteen dash fourteen to convert existing two thousand one hundred and fifty-four square foot single-family dwelling into a preschool, Life Source Preparatory Preschool in the neighborhood office district of the downtown Lancaster specific plan located at four four seven zero nine Beach Avenue, APN three one three four dash zero one nine dash zero zero two.
Second.
Who did?
I second.
All right, thank you. All right. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, and good luck with your venture. If you're here. You are here. Good luck. All right, next item is item number six, which is conditional use permit eighteen fifteen. The public hearing is open on that item. It's Mi Rancho Restaurant at seventeen twenty-one East Avenue J. So do we have speakers on this?
There are no speakers on this item.
No speakers. You know, when we waive the public comments and staff report, particularly it's because last week, last Monday, we have a staff meeting where we meet here and staff shares with us about applications. We don't deliberate nor vote, however we hear what staff has to tell us. So that's oftentimes why we don't listen to another staff report, because it would be a repeat of the same thing we already heard a week ago. So. Waive the staff report? All right? With everyone? All right. So then we'll close the public hearing. Consider a motion.
I consider a motion to adopt resolution number eighteen thirty-two, approving conditional use permit number eighteen fifteen to allow a type forty-seven non-sale general for bona fide restaurant, sorry, alcohol beverage control license and entertainment in approximately two thousand seven ninety-three square feet restaurant, Mi Rancho, in the commercial plan developing zone located at seventeen twenty-one East Avenue J.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything further? Please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
Before we move forward, is that Mi Rancho? Just practicing. Since I had that DNA test done, I'm really feeling that part of my culture.
All right, item number seven is a new public hearing on conditional use permit eighteen dash sixteen. Another restaurant at a different location. So the public hearing's open. Do we have speakers on this?
There are no speakers on this.
No speakers. We'll wave the staff report. Mr. Sivante's really wanted to jump in on this. You sure?
This is actually Ms. Alvarado's.
Oh, Ms. Alvarado. Well, it's one of you two. We already heard from Ms. Alvarado the last time, right? And we heard from you last week.
That's correct.
So it's not that we don't like the sound of your voice? All right. So we waive the public hearing. Consider a motion.
I move that we adopt resolution number eighteen dash thirty-three, approving conditional use permit number eighteen dash sixteen to allow a type forty-one on-sale beer and wine for a bona fide restaurant, alcohol beverage control license and live entertainment in an approximately twenty, three hundred and sixty-three square foot restaurant, Mi Rancho Restaurant. And the L I zoning designation located at four two two one two Tenth Street West.
Thank you.
A second?
Thank you. Anything further? Please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
All right. New Public Business, number eight. Yeah, I'm going to come back to three. So, Ms. De La Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman Vos. This item, as I indicated at our agenda review at last week's meeting, the purpose of this item is to provide an update to the planning commission and depict graphically a pretty significant segment of Avenue L where proposed development could occur. Again, as I mentioned at last week's meeting, the purpose of this exercise was to demonstrate the growth and the changes that are in the pipeline for Avenue L. And a lot of this conversation stems from the projects that you heard earlier this year for Avenue L and Twentieth, as well as Avenue L and Twenty-second. You may recall you heard GPA zone changes and CUPs for a gas station and a self-storage, which created a significant level of conversation for the future of Avenue L. And this diagram before you identifies various opportunity sites where we have, our economic development staff has been working with developers and trying to identify opportunities. And these specific locations that you see depicted on your graphic, that's part of your agenda, shows the sites. In particular, there are six sites that have been identified where you may have general plan amendments and zone changes along with commercial developments associated with them. We have been in talks with various developers for all of these sites that would include uses such as hotels, mixed-use developments, fast food establishments, restaurants, larger restaurants. Specifically, the site shown as area number two on your site plan, which is the southwest corner of Avenue L and the Fourteenth Freeway, we have met with a potential applicant to bring in some food services along with some hospitality services. And so the purpose of this is to just bring this forward and have that dialogue with the planning commission and really give you all a heads up that this is all coming in the near future. And so if there are certain uses or certain development styles that the planning commission would like to entertain and would like us to convey that message back to the developers, this is our opportunity to do so. And so that's the purpose of this assignment.
Thank you. Mr. Vos?
Ms. De La Cruz, thank you. Typically. Okay, this, other than the general plan, the entire city general plan and zoning exercise we went through in two thousand eight, two thousand and nine, actually started in two thousand and seven, I think. Typically, we react to projects that are brought forward. And if they are required to have a zone change or general plan revision and a zone change or a conditional use permit or whatever the case may be, we deal with it on a case-by-case basis. So are you asking us to change that process along this corridor?
No, that's not what this request is for. This is simply to provide kind of a look into the future. We're not asking for any zone changes. We don't have anything on the record right now. There are no applications.
Okay. Got it. So how many mini-marts, gas stations are in here that sell alcohol just for fun? None?
One for sure at Ellen Twentieth.
No, that's already, that already exists. That's an approved project. Any new ones I'm talking about?
There are no new ones that we have seen.
So. I'm still, I'm not sure what you're asking us to do. To give you some guidance?
That's exactly what the request is, is to provide guidance in how, it's more of a temperature gauge on applications that will be coming forward with respect to CUPs and zone changes in the future. One of the, one of the options that we have started with ADC is bringing projects forward on a preview basis. And what that involves is rather than taking an item for the first time for action, it's a process by which the applicant or developer can have some face time with the commission to have a dialogue and get some feedback before they get far into the process. And that's something that we could potentially include for this commission. The ADC has been very responsive to it, and they have appreciated that process. If that's something that the planning commission would like to see for these types of developments, that is also available to you.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, what's your reaction?
I like the, in theory, I do like it. However, we have such a sporty agenda each month. I, I'm not so sure we would fit that. But I'm open. That's just one commissioner's opinion.
And no is a perfectly good answer.
No, 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 I'm trying to come from a place not of no, but of how do we, how would we, where would we fit that? We have agenda review, and then we have the actual public, the actual meeting.
Well, it'd have to be done in public. Has to be agendized.
Correct.
So would it put an application at risk? For instance, let's just say we have a couple of kumbaya meetings with an applicant, a pre-application process in effect, and then we voted down because we really didn't like it at the end. I mean.
Yeah, I think with ADC, it's a different, kind of a different approach. Talking about design guidelines and things like that and how, I mean, there's so many ins and outs when it comes to coming before the planning commission, and things can change at the drop of a hat, so.
That's understood. One of the questions that we get from applicants early on in the process is, well, what is the certainty that planning commission will approve? And our response is, well, we, you know, we make a recommendation that the commission may very well act on that recommendation or not. And so this comes from applicants asking for that. Well, what is the probability that the commission will approve? And so one of the options is, of course, we do have pretty heavy agendas. If we can fit them in, is that something that the commission would like to see early on and really provide feedback and vet these issues early on in the process?
Well, I think even with the early on in the process, there's no guarantee that we're going to go one way or the other until the night of. I mean, until we hear from the public and we hear from the applicants and we hear the various opinions. There's no, there's no magic bullet, really, to ensure that we're going to vote one way or another. So that's my opinion.
Risky. It's risky. Well, just take, for instance, number five on your plan, the Amagrosis specific plan area. That was adopted, what, eight years ago? Something like that? Nine? I don't know. Long while ago. Ten, eleven?
That was some time ago.
Long time ago. Right?
I think two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight.
Yeah, we never saw it. So market has changed. The uses have changed. It's not likely to be developed the way it is currently configured.
And that's correct. There is changes coming to that site as well.
Yeah, so, hey, it's, what is that, thirty-two acres or something? Whatever it is.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't pick applicants and we don't pick the sites. Nor do we advocate for applications, right? Staff doesn't advocate.
That's correct.
That's not your job. So it's up to the applicant to make their case, so. To me, it's risky. I mean, if I was developing, if I was, if I was investing my own money, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think on item two, for instance, that you pointed out, you know, more fast food restaurants on that site. That's always in somebody's idea, or a gas station mini-mart, right? Got to have more of those. Well, you know, there's a finite number, from my point of view, there's a finite number of gallons can be sold in this community. So if you approve three more, you're taking a portion of business away from already established businesses. I mean, where's the equity there? Is that the appropriate thing we ought to be doing? I mean, folks got to make up their mind. So I wouldn't want to presume to listen to somebody pitch me on an AMPM, for instance, in a public session, and then I nod my head and smile at them and then vote no come the meeting six months later. I mean, that, if I was on that side of the podium, I'd be ticked, to say the least. So.
I think it works well for the ADC because they're fundamentally different as far as processes, if you will. It works well for that particular commission. But with ours having to have an approval aspect of it, I think that perhaps changes the reason that it works for them.
Well, ADC has an approval, now they do. Now they were given more authority to approve, and they take action at their meetings. In the last several meetings, they don't approve the first time they see it. And so what we've suggested to a lot of the developers, KB Homes, Richmond American, before they get so far down the process, they've gone now, early on with their concept, they've gone to ADC where they get feedback, and then they know what the ADC will expect when they go back for formal action. And so that's, that's the idea behind it, that you can. And so that's the idea behind it, that you can have a discussion that's a little bit more informal. You get the feedback, you get suggestions from the commission. When you go back for final formal action, you have resolved many of the issues that could have been resolved early on. And again, this is more informational for the commission in nature. There really is no... If the commission does not want the preview process, that's perfectly fine. It was just an option that is available. I think I've heard you all loud and clear on where we stand with all of these applications and we'll proceed with that.
I think if it's just a look ahead to say, you know, down the pipes, we may look at this project. But if there's a reciprocation of some sort of expectation on our part, then no. Like, we have to make... I don't... That's not how I mean it.
You finally said no.
Yeah. No, no, I understood what you meant, Commissioner Harvey.
That's not what I mean. I'm getting a little tired right now, but...
I understand what you meant.
Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Is that a definite maybe?
Have some more almonds, Commissioner Harvey.
In my line of work, I am awake at 3:30 and at work at 6:00, so.
All right. We're done with item eight? Everybody's satisfaction? All right. So we're back to item three. So Commissioner Moore.
Chairman Voss, I'd like to recuse myself for the financial gain and...
The potential financial...
The potential financial gain of this project.
All right. And that's because you're employed in professions that service this type of use.
That's correct.
Very good. All right, thank you. You get to go home early, we get to stay.
Yeah, they'll be right outside.
All right, thank you. We'll wait for that. Get back up. So we still have a quorum, four members. So the new public hearing is open on general plan amendment number 1804, zone change 1804 and conditional use permit 1809, which is Antelope Valley Expansion 1B LLC, DBAS Power. We have speakers on this item.
Yes, we do.
And we've received a significant amount of correspondence. Fish and game or fish and wildlife. Ms. James and some others, if you could give me a minute?
You should have a total of eight comment letters. Three from agencies and five from members of the public.
We also have one from Department of Transportation, Fish and Wildlife, which I've read. AVA QMD. An email from Ms. Prindle. One from Ms. Watson. Those are emails, letters.
Do we happen to have hard copies of that? I can see it on my iPad, however, I cannot download it. It's unable to bring the file up.
One from Glenn Wilson, one from Julie Wilson. And one item appended to that from Dr. Benefield. All right, then. We have speakers on this, so maybe we have staff report, please?
Chairman Voss and commissioners, before you this evening is a conditional use permit, general plan amendment and zone change for a 25-megawatt photovoltaic facility. The project site is generally bounded by Avenue H, Avenue H-12, 75th Street West and 67th Street West. The proposed project consists of solar panels mounted on pile-driven steel posts and associated underground gentileines. Grading would be limited to the onsite roadways required by the fire department and four pads associated with inverters, transformers and battery storage. These pads would be paved. Access to the project site would be from Avenue H and 70th Street West, which are both paved. Landscaping would be provided along Avenue H and 70th Street West and around the entire perimeter of the parcel located on the east side of 70th Street West. Operation of the project would be done remotely with personnel visiting the site for maintenance and system monitoring activities. Upon termination of operations at the project site, the site would be decommissioned and the systems and its components removed. All decommissioning and restoration activities will be done in accordance with applicable rules and regulations in place at the time. The 115 acres located on the west side of 70th Street West are designated as rural residential and zoned RR2.5. However, the 20 acres located on the east side of 70th Street West are designated as park and zoned as park, which do not allow for the construction of a solar facility on this parcel. As such, the developer is requesting to change the designation and zoning to non-urban residential and RR2.5. An initial study was prepared for the proposed project in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act and circulated for a 30-day public review and comment period. This comment period started on August 15th and ended on September 14th. The notice of availability was sent to all property owners within 1,500 feet, published in the AV Press, filed at the county clerk's office and posted at City Hall and the library. Copies of the initial study were distributed to state agencies through the state clearinghouse and mailed to local agencies, available upon request and available on the city's website. As of close of business today, a total of eight comment letters were received, three from agencies, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, the Antelope Valley Air Quality Management District and Caltrans, and five from members of the public. The letter from the air district identifies requirements that the solar facility would be subject to. These requirements are already included in the conditions of approval and mitigations for the project. The Caltrans letter states that the proposed project would not affect any of their facilities and identifies the requirements in the event that oversized equipment would be transported on a Caltrans facility. These are a restatement of existing regulations. The California Department of Fish and Wildlife letter identifies potential concerns and recommends mitigation measures for burrowing owls, tricolored blackbirds, nesting birds, swans and hawk, raptors and streams. A biological resources report was prepared for the project site, which included a survey of the site biologists. Additionally, a jurisdictional delineation was prepared for the project, which addressed potential impacts to waters of the state under jurisdiction of both the Regional Water Quality Control Board and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. None of the species of concern identified by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife were observed on the project site. However, mitigation measures have been provided in the initial study, which address potential impacts to these species and waters. In addition to the issues raised by the three agencies, members of the public raised issues with respect to dust and valley fever, heat and glare, noise, decreased property values, hazardous materials, project decommissioning, the need for a park and wildlife species. Dust and valley fever, the project site, project developers not allowed to grade the site except as identified in the staff report. And there is a very detailed mitigation measure with respect to valley fever that the planning commission conditions on all development projects at this time. It identifies personal protective equipment and other features for the workers onsite. Also requires notification of residents and a detailed valley fever education program to be developed in conjunction with the Department of Public Health. This is consistent with the presentation that planning commission staff received by the Department of Public Health specifically to address valley fever. Heat and glare, the panels are designed to minimize the amount of glare coming off of them as the intent is to absorb as much of the sunlight as possible to generate the electricity. Noise, there will be noise as a result of construction, specifically from pile-driven posts when they thump it in, also from construction equipment. There are several mitigation measures that require the amount of noise on the site to be reduced to the maximum extent possible. It also limits the hours of construction. Decreased property values. Property values are not an environmental issue. It is something that the commission can take into consideration for, as part of their decision-making process. However, it is not something that is discussed in an initial study. Hazardous materials, the proposed project would utilize minimal hazardous materials, specifically dielectric fluid, mineral oil used in the transformers. The panels are recycled. If they break or are no longer useful, there's procedures for recycling them and the applicant can speak more to that. Project decommissioning, at the end of the useful life of the project, the applicant is required to remove everything from the project site. They will decommission the project in conjunction with the rules and regulations that exist at the time that the project is decommissioned. The need for a park. The city's general plan and zoning designations identify the 20 acres for a park. And when the general plan was adopted in 2009, there was an expectation that that area would develop out as residential. In 2010 and 2011 is when the solar industry started picking up and a lot of the property that we originally thought would be residential, including a lot of the rural residential properties, but even the large specific plan properties on the west side, didn't develop as residential and have been developed as solar. So the actual need for a park doesn't exist to the same extent that it did at that time. Whether the site should be used as a park or not is up to your discretion. There's no plans at this time in the city to develop these properties as parks. And in May of 2018, there was a public hearing before the city council, which agreed to do a lease option or a purchase agreement with the solar developer for these specific properties. And then I've already talked about the wildlife species. I can answer any questions that you may have. The developer is here and can answer any questions also.
All right, thank you.
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
It's okay. What is the current zoning around that, on the east side, around that area that's designated as park?
Everything on that project site, I believe surrounding it, is either zoned as RR2.5 or if it's within the county, it's zoned A-2-2.5 or A-2-2. And that's heavy agricultural with a minimum lot size of two or two and a half acres.
Okay, thank you.
And the reason for the proposed zone change on the one parcel is to conform it to the standard to allow solar development?
Correct. So solar development is not allowed on property designated as park. Solar developments actually are only allowed with a use permit in the RR2.5 zone or with a director's review or site plan review in the heavy industrial zone.
I don't believe we have any in the heavy industrial zone, however, they're all in 2.5.
We have two... One. One that was previously constructed e-solar, where we used to have the really tall towers and those have been taken down and in its place, there'll be two photovoltaic solar facilities built there, but those are the only ones in the industrial zones.
That was the NRG project, I think.
No, it's... Originally was e-solar and the two proposing development on it now are solar electric solutions with specific LLCs for each project.
The one on the old fairgrounds, wasn't it?
What was that?
The one on the old fairgrounds.
The one on the old fairgrounds was Topco. And so, yes, you are correct. The old fairgrounds and Third Street East and Kettering.
All right, thank you. All right. Maybe we hear from the applicant to take care to address us now. Mr. Bean, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Voss and commissioners. Congratulations, Commissioner Paris. Appreciate you taking the time to have me back again. Just wanted to say a couple of words. I know there's already been extensive review on this project on your behab. We do believe that this zoning is compatible with RR2.5 that surrounds it, so this is an appropriate zone change. We understand that we are next to community members, some of which are sitting behind me, and we're aware of some of their concerns. We did have the opportunity to sit down with them on August 29th. Here are some of their concerns. We understand the preference is to not have a solar facility there at all, but this provides a great opportunity to continue the mission that the city council set forth. With that said, we do anticipate continuing to work with them. We have mentioned to staff that we are willing to accommodate... We have mentioned to staff that we are willing to accommodate some of the requests and the discussions that we had with the community just regarding potentially doing slatted fencing, additional setbacks. Since we first met with them, we have done extensive design simulations with our engineering team. We anticipate being able to give them greater than the thirty-two-foot setback that is within the conditions, at least a fifty, potentially more. So we'll continue to work with them on that and work with staff on that and find solutions that can address any issues that may arise. In regards to valley fever, we know the sensitive nature of this. Our construction staff is very experienced in dealing with this, and I think the planning commission, council staff, has seen us implement successful measures in the past on our projects, including the one nearest Antelope Acres. Again, as I mentioned last hearing, that project, although in construction for over seven months about, we've received one complaint, we've received accolades from the AVA QMD, and we continue to work with the community on those concerns and in those regards. So with that, I'd welcome any questions that you may have. Happy to answer them.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Yes. I know it's a joy talking to me every time you bring up something, right, before this commission.
I heard you say earlier tonight that you were trying not to say no.
And I'm trying to come from a place of yes. But I look at this, and I wonder, is this the furthest out that you could have gone? Because I look, I'm going to play the role of Joe Citizen, as I am in this city, in this great city. And I purchased a home, thinking it would be at some point potentially a park, and now it's more solar. Was this the furthest out you could have gone, just out of curiosity?
Could we go further to the east?
Could you have gone further out, where it's not as close to residential?
Well, I think the challenge that we're constantly facing in developing projects in the Antelope Valley is finding a piece of land that suits the needs or works with solar energy, but can be built and generate electricity at a competitive price to the right payers. So while there's other pieces of land, as I'm sure you can imagine, we've looked at thousands in the Antelope Valley. As we moved east, this fit into a nice assemblage for us, based on the pricing of the land, based on the use. It is directly east of an existing solar project, obviously, a little bit further to the east over by Eightieth, which is the originally permitted Beautiful Earth Group solar project, and then ours, which will hopefully be to the north if we're successful and moving forward at the next city council meeting. So part of the reason why we selected this is that because of its proximity to those existing projects, because of the proximity near existing infrastructure, and that's why it's before you here today. Could we have gone further to the east? We can go further to the east, and it's really cost benefits to the project, and if we can successfully build and construct one.
So how many, and this is perhaps a question to city staff, how many residential units, homes are in that area?
So immediately surrounding the project's site, that particular parcel, there are six homes immediately south and one immediately to the east. There's one, two, there's a couple directly north of the site, of the project boundary on H, and then as you continue to go out, there's handfuls and scatterings of residences.
And one last question, not to hog all the questions, but just one more question. So is there anything, as far as from a data analytics perspective, any research, any studies that we've done as a city that says the solar farms are impacting resale, property resale?
Not that I'm aware that the city has done, no.
Okay. Okay, I may have other questions, but.
Okay.
I'll yield this time for now.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I don't know, for some, and I think I maybe touched on what you, for some reason, this location just gives me a little bit of heartburn. I don't know what it is. I don't know if it's because it's kind of a familiar route to me, and I kind of know the houses around it.
Mm-hmm.
So when you talk about you could go further east, are you talking about once or if this is approved, and then also going further east, or?
No, we're not, we don't have any land that we have acquired further to the east. I'm just saying, because of the zoning and to the east of us, it is zoned for solar development with approval of the CUP. This is one of the furthest east projects that we have worked on. This project does have a power purchase agreement contract on it, so it's very important to us that we move it forward. There are, it is challenging to find plots of land out here, as you can imagine. This is a twenty-acre site. A lot of the, as you continue to move further to the east, you will get into some two point five, some ten-acre lots, things like that, so it makes it extremely difficult to develop a project. But the eighty-acre parcel to the north is owned by AVEC. We've been working in collaboration with them for some time to design a solar facility out there while preserving some emergency extraction wells for their purpose, so it's a good win for them as well.
And why the gap in the middle of the two?
Because we weren't able to.
You weren't able to obtain that land?
Yeah.
Okay.
One thing, we do continuously look for different opportunities out there. If that land were to come up, we would consider, you know, something in that area.
Okay, thank you.
So you have to assemble suitable configured property at a price point that pencils, right? Just like any other type of development, whether it be single-family or whatever.
Yes.
As we've pointed out many times, we don't select the sites, nor do we select the applicant. We respond to the application. So let's talk about your Gentai lines.
Mm-hmm.
And the reason this makes sense to you folks is that you have previously approved projects that you can easily tie into to transmit the energy.
That's correct.
And those structures are all underground structures now, right, for this project?
We would anticipate going underground along Avenue H.
Right.
Yes, within the roadway.
Okay. What about screening? You touched on it, and I, for the record, I'll point out, you and I have had individual conversation regarding screening and potential alternate methods other than landscaping and chain link fence. I don't know what the good answer is, but certainly the landscaping that others have put in have failed. I mean, it's just, they just are not, they don't work. It doesn't work. It's a great idea, but if you can't irrigate them and maintain them properly, those vegetation dies, and it's just looks worse than having nothing, at least as far as I'm concerned. So what other, what other methods, I mean, the conditions before us indicate landscaping, right? What other methods would you suggest?
Well, one of the methods I suggested was slatted fencing in that location. We have used it in other locations near residences. That seems to be the preferred approach. We're happy to do that. There was some concern over having barbed wire on the top of our fences in that area, and we are willing to waive the requirement for that. With other approaches that we have considered, that we've mentioned before, are using berms and other visual barriers such as that to provide more of a buffer. It's not intended to completely screen the site, but it is intended to mitigate the aesthetic impacts of that. So those are some of the items that we've discussed in the past. Yep, I'll leave it at that.
On the far east side, on a previous application, some of the agricultural operations out there use a combination berm of native soil and mulch, or all mulch. I'm not sure how it's done.
Mm-hmm.
But that tends to, you know, be a visual deterrent if that's feasible or even makes sense.
Yeah, one thing I will note on that as well, I'm not sure if anyone's been out to some of our sites during the springtime, but we do put seed mixes on our side and make sure that they're completely stabilized. Putting some of those seed mixes on the berms have served as a good visual buffer, especially during the springtime.
Let's talk about dust control then. I mean, we have the recommendations and requirements of the Antelope Valley Air Quality Management District, plus our own city requirement, which you and your company have complied with certainly in the past, and we would expect if this project's approved, you will continue. But each site is unique. Every soil condition is unique. And with what, very limited grading, you're talking about only.
Roads.
Roads.
And inverter pads.
And the inverter pad.
Yep.
All right, thanks. You may have an opportunity to rebut after we listen to our fellow citizens.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. Have speakers?
Colleen Schultz.
I didn't clearly hear the last name, Pope, is it?
Schultz.
Pope, okay, welcome.
Hello, good evening, should I say? I could have flown to Dallas by now, but it's okay.
Yeah, I was sorry to have to.
Thank you for having us.
Kept you all so long, but.
Right.
Here we are.
Okay, so, you know, I understand the need and what you guys have going on, and that you're looking to, you know, save on your property value when you buy. But, you know, that lot right behind us, there's a lot of concerns that I have. We've actually, I have a very nice piece of property, and we have weddings there and things like that, and everyone in the family has been married there, and that would not be a nice backdrop for us at all. And to be honest with you, you know, it'd cause a lot of dust and things that you've already talked about. I have severe asthma. My doctor said, "Take your puffer. If it didn't work, call 911 and then take it again." So we like the vegetation the way it is, because it's, you know, it's all, if, once they, we've had in the last few years, we've dealt with what they've done in the, on the further west from us. The dust just comes our way, and it gets so bad. They've had bad dust storms go across the freeway, and, you know, there's been accidents on that freeway, but that's just during implementation, I understand that. But some of the dust, you know, or the ground cover doesn't grow back, and it just creates very bad dust storms out there. We have animals out there as well. These also create noise. Animals can hear hundreds of times, sometimes better than we can, especially me. But with that said, you know, I don't know what it's going to do to my animals out there. They're going to be up against these fences, basically, listening to this all day, and it's a high-pitched tone. For them, it's very irritating. And the dust and everything else. You talk about some of the protective wear that the workers would have to wear, but what about the animals that are out there that are standing up against the fence watching this? So I'm concerned with all of that. And we moved into this location for the views and the wildlife. I can show you pictures right now of owls that are out there breeding in the trees right there. So if they spent five minutes out there looking for some of these animals and didn't see them, I don't know what they were looking for, because they are there. They're all over right there. And, I mean, I have a lot to say, and I don't have any more time to say it, so I guess I'll finish with that. But, you know, we have a beautiful view out there. It's beautiful, that's why we went out there. And that's about all I can say, I guess.
All right, thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
David Gomez.
Ms. Gomez, welcome.
Good evening, everybody. I'm with the National Electrical Contractors Association. I represent entrepreneurs in the industry for the electrical. Also, I represent the labor, the electricians. We have agreements. Goal is to bring in apprentices, to give them careers, not jobs. They'll work on that project and then move on on other projects in LA County. So I'm in favor of this, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Glenn Watson.
Mr. Watson, welcome.
Thank you, sir. Chairman Vos, Commissioners, thanks for hearing us. That neighborhood just to the south of the eastern parcel there is where we live. So I understand that this is less than a huge impact to the city of Lancaster as a whole, but if you live a hundred feet from where they're planning on putting in solar, where we had thought it was zoned park, it is a significant impact to the seven houses, specifically around that twenty-acre parcel. What you can't see real well in that picture there is there's a bunch of trees right there. They're thirty-year-old trees from a community that was built thirty years ago. They're sixty, seventy feet tall. An arborist used to live in that neighborhood, and there are hundreds of trees there. It's our own little oasis in the desert, and we moved there and enjoy that area because of that. I'm not against solar energy, I'm not against building, I'm not against economics. I understand the economics of what it takes to put a project together. And this is a convenient place from an economic standpoint, but it is a hugely inconvenient place for a group of people who do live there, citizens of Lancaster, right? I am concerned about during the construction phase, the stirrup of the dust. My mother-in-law lives with us. She's got multiple myeloma and is a depressed immune system because of the chemo that she's going through. And she's going through valley fever screening routinely because of that. The note from Dr. Benefield is directly in relation to her. I guess the best I can say at this point is I would ask you respectfully to consider not rezoning that twenty-acre parcel just north of the houses where we live. Thank you all for listening to us.
All right, thank you, sir. Another speaker?
Walter McCollman.
Excuse me. Evening, and welcome.
Good evening, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, as well. Before my time starts, could I make a correction to what Ms. Swain said earlier?
May you what?
May I make a correction to what she said earlier, because it was incorrect? I wanted to make.
Well, your time has started, but you just carry right on.
Okay, so her statement earlier about the month that we had is incorrect. May I have the previous screen, please? The one with your lists there. Dustin Valley Fever, yes, it was raised. The mitigation is to put water on it three times a day. I worked in the solar fields. I agree with Mr. Gomez. I've worked for S-Power. The talk of grading and paving and so on, that's a minute portion. The equipment that runs up and down between the panels and the people that walk up and down there, that's where the dust is made. You cannot get water to that. They never have, and they never will, okay? So that's where the majority of the dust comes from. I've seen it, I've experienced it, I've seen solar panels blown out of workers' hands and break other solar panels. It's impossible to mitigate this dust. It's impossible to mitigate this dust. Heat and glare, the absurd, the absurdity of saying that we are not going to get glare from a solar panel. We just had solar panels removed in Palmdale because they were killing vegetation around homes. Noise, you can't mitigate a pile driver, you can hear those for miles, okay? We could hear 'em when they were put in 80th Street. Decreased property values, there's not a lot of studies. So, before we move forward further, Ms. Smith and Ms. Harvey were talking about a gut feeling. We're crossing 70th Street. We've moved a mile and a third from the 80th Street. We've jumped a mile and a third, that's crazy. Hazardous material, every piece of glass is a hazardous material. If it cracks, it has to be a hazardous material. The decommissioning, are they gonna decommission it as barren land or the original desert foresite? Need for a park? No, we were told it was a park, okay? It was sold to the developer before the request. We, you know, it's not a need, it was, it was told to us. Wildlife species, yeah, burrowing owls and so on and so forth. But the absurdities, the omissions and the misstatements in this are too numerous to talk about in three minutes. You need three months to sit down and talk about these. And so, I hope that you really consider, take into your gut, why are we crossing 70th Street?
All right, thank you for your comment.
That's, that's our city that we're, we're talking about.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you for allowing me to go over a few minutes.
Certainly. Another speaker?
Renee Watson.
Ms. Watson, good evening, welcome.
Hi, thank you. I also live in the little property that you see in there. What you couldn't see in the picture there, I don't know if it was taken in the wintertime, but it's very green there. It's the only green space out there in amongst all the dirt. It's our own little park there. Having the solar panels there is gonna greatly detract from the community there as a whole. I already spoke about my, or they spoke about, my mother lives there, she has multiple myeloma. We do have a letter from Dr. Benefil stating how detrimental the dust would be to her. If you look on the CDC's website, and also on their MMWR statements on, again, from the state of California, there are multiple studies on there that show the incidence of valley fever increasing amongst the, and the solar panel workers. That's only because they're in the dust. I understand that they have put mitigation factors in there, but all the mitigation are, wear a respirator for the workers, put HEPA filters on the tractors for the workers, have a separate eating facility for the workers. What about the people that live right next to it? We're there 24/7. We can't expect to wear a mask all day. We can't go in our homes and live in there, trapped in there because of the dust. I don't know if you guys have been out there before, but the wind that goes through there is a lot stronger than some other parts of Lancaster. So, you stir up a little bit of dust, mix in the wind, it's not just gonna go straight line away from my house, it's going to spread. So, there isn't a way to truly mitigate that factor there. Most people who get valley fever, sure, they might get sick, they might get sick for a while. I have personal friends who have been out of school or out of work for two years. For my mother, that's not the case. If she contracted valley fever, it would be hospitalization and possibly death. And I'm not exaggerating on that. I am a nurse, so I know what I'm speaking of there. There's lots of other factors that go into this with the, the wildlife, the, the heat, the glare. You look out on the mountains to the other side of us, where it used to be covered in poppies everywhere enjoying our view, is now what? Glass. Everywhere you look out there is glass. Can you really tell me that this 20 acres, or even 135 acres as a whole, is needed? Do we really need that little bit of extra power? Is that really going to bring that much more to Lancaster? Or is it just going to bring in that little bit of money? We're citizens of Lancaster, too. I feel like we should be represented, not just the people who are trying to make money for Lancaster. I see my time is up, so, thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments, ma'am. Another speaker, please.
Berta Prindle.
Good evening, Commissioners. I am Berta Prindle, and I am what they've been talking about with multiple myeloma. And I'm here tonight to, I guess, plead with y'all not to rezone that 20 acres, because it will impact my life so much. They are talking about the cost savings. They picked that property because it, they would save money on that particular one. It's a cost saving to them, but it could cost me my life. I, in the last four years, I've had stem cell transplant, I've gone through multiple rounds of chemotherapy, and I have to take a chemo drug every single day, and probably will for the rest of my life, to keep the blood cancer from, you know, coming back really strong. In the last four years, I've had pneumonia three times. I was in intensive care for a week one time, I was in the hospital for three weeks another time. My immune system, because of everything that I've been through, is severely compromised. I get infections very easily, and I don't get over it very easily. So, it, it's a very serious concern, and I really want to live, and I don't want to be, you know, contracting the valley fever. You know, like my daughter said, a lot of people get over it in just a few months' time, but that would not be my case. So, again, I, I would like to plead, you know, for you to keep the 20 acres zoned as a park. And I don't know what else to say. I think they've already said a lot about my condition, so, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, thank you very much for your comments.
Joanne James.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you for waiting so long for all of us. I have to tell you...
Ms. James, we, you were the first one that wrote to us.
Yes, me, yes.
Thank you.
Well, I am really sick to my stomach about all of this, and so are they. This is such an emotional issue for all of us. But I wanted to talk to Mr. Paris for just a second, because he started tonight by saying why he wanted to be a part of this group, and he said that, that he was impressed with the trajectory of progress that Lancaster was involved in, and what we were involved in here. And I want you to think in terms of progress here. We talked tonight about the fact that, once upon a time, we thought that the community was moving out there. Well, I think that it just didn't take that long to, I mean, it took longer than we thought to get out there, because if you notice, if you drive out there and notice all of the real estate signs, they're all moving out toward us, and it is looking like the possibility of a lot of homes that are going out there. And so, the progress that we're talking about, I would love to think is homes and people, and, oh my gosh, if, I'm just talking about that little 20 acres, and that they need to, that little 20-acre project, it's not just behind us somewhere, it's right smack up against all of our lots, all of our homes. And the noise and dust and all the things that we're talking about here, it's not something that you can go away from and just ignore and pretend like it's not there, or mitigate. There's no way. And we just need to move it on the other side of the street. But we're hoping that you do not zone that for anything else but that park, because that is so important for all the people moving out, for us, for safety, for, for noise, for all of the process that is involved here. I don't want to go back over all of that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. James.
No more speaker cards.
That concludes this comment, it's all right. Mr. Bean?
Yeah, to the issues. No, to the issues list, no, yep. I appreciate all the concerns, and, Berta, we want you here with us, too. But, what we're gonna try and do, what we will do and commit to doing, is building a project that is safe for you as the neighbors. We've had over 4,500 IBW electrical workers on our projects, that's not to mention the laborers, operators, and others. And, Dave, how many valley fever incidents have you had reported?
None in either project.
Zero. So, working with AVA QMD, I think we can do what is necessary. I know we can do what is necessary. We are implementing other measures, using mulch, using water, using the whole toolbox, not just one little item, to solve the issues out there. When these projects are constructed in the ground, hopefully, they're minimizing that dust. I think if you actually go out and look at our projects, as some of the staff has, you'd see that they're extremely stable for the long-term operation of it, and during the construction period of it. With heat and glare, we know that there is some glare that can come off panels at certain angles. These are the tracking technologies that are going to face the sun. So, as you can imagine, if the sun is coming down, it's hitting the panel and then reflecting directly back off. These are not stationary ground mount facilities like our neighbor has. Noise, we anticipate being able to complete the pile driving in about a week if we focus ourselves on just that parcel alone. So, that would be our intent, to make it as quick and painless as possible. Now, we will have other activities out there, but they are temporary in nature. Decreased property values, as Jocelyn mentioned, obviously, the commission does have broad discretion over this, this topic. I think we're continuing to see homes sell out there. I agree that not everyone is going to want to sit next to a solar facility. There's lots of people out there that come up to us and say, "I'd rather have that than other houses out there." So, there's varying perspectives on that. It's, it's not just the price of our property that we're looking. Yes, it has to pencil, yes, it has to meet stringent environmental regards that Ms. Swain's worked through in advising us, and we've worked through on our other projects. As far as the need for a park, as I mentioned at the last hearing, Aspire is committed to helping develop some of those park facilities that are available to many of the community members. This is obviously directly north of these residences, away from a lot of other residences. While I'd like to say, hey, I'd go and choose another parcel over there, to be honest, a lot of those other parcels have a couple residences by them as well. So, it's, it's extremely difficult to find land out here where we can move projects like this forward. I think when we start talking about our trajectory of progress, I think you can look at it a lot of different ways, but over the last year, couple of years, we've put 4,500 electricians to work. We've, Aspire has invested over a billion dollars in projects. Are we gonna say that, hey, we're not gonna do solar east of 70th, even if it's zoned appropriately, or even if it's compatible with other zoning uses? I think we need to seriously take a look at that if, if we're going to try and accomplish the city's goals. Just this last year, we hit a milestone where we're producing enough green energy in the city of Lancaster to offset all of the cars that are driven in Lancaster and Palmdale. I think that not only goes just to improving the air quality that we see coming over from Los Angeles, from other areas, it, it's changing the world we live in. 160,000 cars taken off the road on an annual basis. That's pretty amazing. But it didn't come in one project. It came in pieces as we started to work through all these different segments, and working with the community members, finding creative solutions to make these projects move forward. I think there is a trajectory of progress. We want to help the city get there, and we believe it's what's best for our future generations as well. So, happy to take any more questions.
Thank you. You read the comments from California Department Fish and Wildlife?
I've seen them before.
Well, I have too. You know, some of them are, are standard. Most of them, if not all, have been addressed in the mitigated neglect deck, unless I'm missing something.
All of their comments have been addressed in the mitigated neglect deck.
The burrowing owl mitigation measure, number one, it's covered. Number two is covered in the fee payment. Preservation restoration's been covered. What about the rodenticides?
What about the what? So, that's Fish and Wildlife's request that they not use any rodenticides on their project site, as we've previously discussed at other hearings. For the most part, Aspire does not use any, but there may come a, a situation when they're required to. But it would obviously be in conjunction with all, you know, appropriate rules and regulations. For the most part, they do not use it.
So, the non-protected species that damage the electrical connections is really what you're talking about?
We've seen it one time in about five years and over a gigawatt of projects, and we've only had to use it once. So, it's pretty limited, and it was not in Lancaster.
It's not, and it's not something that's...
It's not.
Broadcast on the ground and that, no.
No, and it obviously has to comply with all the local and federal regulations.
Okay. CDFG, talking about CDFW.
Same entity.
Old school. Talks about the tri-colored blackbirds, but there's no indication in, in any of the studies...
There, there's no tri-colored blackbird habitat on the project site.
Right.
If one happened to be flying by, they might forage on the project site, but there's no suitable nesting habitat for them.
And the migratory bird mitigations, the suggestion that, in effect, no development takes place between February 15th and August 31st, that's a standard request from Fish and Wildlife.
Correct, so the way the city...
Whether, whether it's a solar project or any other kind of development in the community, right?
Correct, so the way the city deals with that is, we require developers to do pre-construction surveys on their project site regardless of time of year. Because trying to figure out when a, a specific species of nesting bird may be nesting on the project site isn't effective, so we have them do, the biologist squad, do a pre-construction survey.
Well, it's one of the, and I'm not sure which I didn't write, I didn't keep my notes correct, but one of the speakers, it may have been Ms. Watson, I think, spoke about the raptors poten, nesting in her trees.
And they probably are. However, there are none nesting on the project site.
Right.
And they do, they are required to do pre-construction surveys for nesting birds on the project site, and Swainson's hawk and raptor surveys prior to construction, and they are required to establish buffer zones regard...
Right.
Around any nesting raptor.
Whether it's this project or any other development, whether it was, even including developing a park?
That is correct.
So, who owned the park? Who used to own the park?
So, the property itself was previously owned by the city of Lancaster. I don't know if escrow closed on the property or not, but at a public hearing, I believe it was May 8th, 2018, the city council voted to sell the property to S-Power. A couple of other things to note, that even if we have residential developments going in, and you've seen it with Avani North and Avani South, and some of our other residential developments, all of the recreational or park facilities within those developments are privately owned and maintained. The city isn't developing... The city isn't developing, um, parks to go associated with that. So, Avani South, which was just a recently approved, all of the parks within that residential subdivision are gonna be privately developed and maintained. Same with the streets. Now, these streets are obviously Seventieth and H are, um, not privately owned and maintained, but, um, within subdivisions they are.
All recent development is con, is conditioned to be once developed, maintained in total by either a, a CFD or a homeowners association or whatever.
That is correct.
So, the, the city is out of the street improvement maintenance business on new development?
On the, the interior private streets.
On the private streets, yeah.
Um, arterials, secondary arterials, the city is still maintaining them.
Right. Okay, so, I'm sorry, did you say something?
I didn't, I did not.
Oh, okay. You have questions? Anyone? So, in effect, the city has indicated that they have no intention, city council has no intention of developing that property as a park, and they've disposed of it.
That is correct.
And, and if we look at our city's general plan, the preponderance of single-family residential development is taking place south of J between Seventieth and Fiftieth to M.
We have a lot in that area. We also have some that is going in on the east side. Um, I would say the development is going from Avenue I south to JRK-ish.
You look at the configuration of the parcels south of I, north of I, and the preponderance of acre and a quarters and two and a halves, they do not lend themselves to major residential development unless you assemble them, which is very similar to what Mr. Bean does.
That is correct.
He assembles, he assembles parcels so it can make economic sense. The same with any other type of development, whether it's residential or industrial scale or commercial or whatever. All right?
Correct, many developers compile properties to get a size property they need for the development that they're proposing.
The, um, your initial study talked about underground storage tanks or the potential of a UST on, on the eighty?
On this parcel up here?
Yeah.
That was previously developed as Ben's Ranch. There is the possibility of underground storage tanks, um, if they do exist on the site, they need to be removed in accordance with existing regulations and closed.
So, the wells that are out there are powered by electricity, they're not gas engine?
No, I believe they are electricity, that's correct.
Electric.
Yeah, they're the emergency extraction wells for-
Right, for AVE. But the, there's domestic wells, and I think there's, on the ranch, I think there's-
Correct.
-some domestic well. Will you utilize those or no?
Uh, typically, we will. Um, we'll throw a pump down there and utilize it for, uh, construction purposes to minimize the traffic. Uh, what we're required to do, obviously, with the adjudication that goes through, is purchase water rights for the term of our use.
If they aren't using the water wells, they are required to close them.
Right. Circling back to the landscaping, fencing, berms. How do we resolve that?
From staff's perspective, we're open to, to any of those options. Um, previously, um, direction had been landscaping only because, um, the slots weren't, um, liked approved, or however that may be. Um, we have done a test approval for slots, um, on a solar project on the east side, um, which is getting ready to undergo construction. Um, berms have also been used on the project that's currently under construction at the northwest corner of the city pretty successfully, um, so staff is open, um, to any of those options.
So, how do, assuming this goes forward, how do we condition this, then, to give staff the flexibility to impose an appropriate mitigation?
I believe you direct staff, um, to look at options that would replace landscaping along H and Seventieth and around the perimeter on the east side with something substantially more effective and aesthetically pleasing as possible, um, whether that's the berms which they use on the east side, and as you brought up, in agricultural, but a lot of that is for dust control.
Right.
Um, and the dust control, the berms at the project under construction now were predominantly for dust control, so, you know, a berm with mulch and then the native seed planting, um, may be a good option.
Yeah, 'cause the adjacencies, for the most part, are, are not masonry walls. There's a couple of, I think the one on the furthest north off of Seventieth, what would be what, H?
This right here?
Yeah, whatever. No, no, no.
Yeah, this, this is H right here.
No, H, the, um, the neighbors that are here off of-
So, right here?
Yeah, the northern, I think there's, there are masonry walls on one of those, but for the, the preponderances, either chain link or some other method of interior, or enclosure around their property.
Chairman Vos, I think, uh, one thing to note is that when we go through the construction process, we are required to have a landscaping plan approved by the planning department. Um, having all the tools in that toolkit are useful, whether it is some landscaping, whether, uh, it's a couple trees, whether it's, uh, berms, uh, mulch berms, vegetation, slatted fencing. Um, I think you've seen in the past that we've been very collaborative in our approach there. Uh, no different, different here. Um, we would seek more input from the community. I know at this point, uh, it's a little early for that.
No, their preferences go away, thank you.
Right, yep. I stole that today.
I think, I think I've said that pretty clearly, right?
Yep. Yes, so-
But that's not your intent. Your intent is to proceed forward.
Is to continue developing it. Uh, we're early on in the process, as I mentioned. As we look to develop and potentially push this out to build it and, um, not, maybe not this next year, maybe towards then, two thousand and twenty, uh, we're running model simulations to, uh, make that buffer larger, um, expand upon it, and we'll be working with the community to make sure we address that and with the planning staff.
All right, anything further from anyone? Nope? Anything care to add? No?
Not at this moment.
All right, thank you. All right, then. What's your pleasure, folks? Keep the hearing open and continued, or close the hearing and have a vote? I'm closing the public hearing and without objection. There's an objection? Nope? All right, consider a motion.
I move that we adopt resolution number eighteen dash twenty-nine, approving conditional use permit number eighteen dash zero-nine to allow for the construction and operation of a twenty-five megawatt photovoltaic solar electric generating facility, adopting a mitigated negative declaration and recommending approval of general plan amendment number eighteen dash zero-four and zone change number eighteen dash zero-four to the city council.
Thank you. There a second?
I'll second.
Harvey. Thank you. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Nope? Please vote. Have to do it again, I think it went away. Oh, it's over there.
Motion passes three to one.
Three to two, or three to one? So, since we have a quorum, that is a yes. Now, for the community's understanding, the, um, general plan revision and zone change, um, must be confirmed by the city council.
Correct, so what the, the planning commission did was make a recommendation on the general plan amendment and zone change. Um, that action needs to be taken up by the city council. It'll be another public hearing.
Right, which will be agendaized but not noticed, right? Or is it noticed?
Oh, no, it is a public hearing and the, the notices will go out and the sign will go up on the property.
So, everybody will get a notice, and all the folks that have written to us will be sure get a notice, right?
Correct, they're already on the distribution list.
We have a mailing list, right? Okay. All right. Thank you all. Okay. I'm, I'm sorry, folks, I can't, um- All right. So, the next item on the agenda is a discussion of meeting dates. The November planning commission date and the January and February planning commission date. So, Ms. Data Cruz, where are we?
The date that we selected for the regular planning commission meeting, actually, it would be a special planning commission meeting for Monday, November twenty-sixth, that would replace, um, the regular, let me just pull that date for you.
November nineteenth?
November nineteenth meeting, correct. November nineteenth is a holiday, so we propose November twenty-sixth as the next-
November twelfth is the holiday. November nineteenth is the regularly scheduled-
That is correct, forgive me.
Memorial Day?
Correct. Uh, veterans.
Veterans Day?
Sorry, it's late.
No, I'm reading on here, it's the AV memorial.
Oh.
So, it's the, yeah, it's Antelope Valley Veterans Memorial. That I'm scheduled to work at, that's why I'm reading memorial.
Memorial Day-
Work with me a little bit, I'm old school.
Memorial Day is in May, I, I think.
I used to write it on what's called a day timer, and prior to that, it was three-by-five cards. You guys, you're no fun.
So, we would, we would ha, hold the meeting November twenty-sixth and-
As a regular meeting and the nineteenth as the planning meeting?
The nineteenth would be the agenda review.
Okay. Speaking of timing, we meet at four-thirty on, on the agenda review.
That's correct.
So, the next time we have a full commission, we ought to talk about that timing. I don't know if four-thirty is good for everybody still, or would five o'clock be better? You can be anywhere at any time?
Exactly, they're working out for us, aren't they?
Okay, you don't care. All right, fine, I don't care either.
What do you think?
Four-thirty's good for you? I'm worried about you. I'm worried about you, Rutger. Worried about you. All right, then, January twenty-first will move to the twenty-eighth?
That's correct, that's yet another holiday.
And the, Jan, February eighteenth will move to the twentieth?
That's correct.
Okay. So, we have President's Day and Martin Luther King Birthday, I guess, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so you'll put that on our agenda to vote on, I suppose, right? Next meeting?
Oh, you can do it tonight, is what, is my understanding.
We can?
Yeah, it was on the agenda, so you can, you can make that decision tonight, and we can run with it.
So, the motion is reschedule the November two thousand and eighteen planning commission regular meeting to Monday, the twenty-sixth of two thousand and eighteen, and the staff agenda review to November nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and to reschedule the January planning commission regular meeting to January twenty-eighth, and the February planning commission meeting to February twenty-fifth. And who made that motion?
So moved.
That's what I heard. Goodness. And who seconded that?
Second.
Okay. We're done. Please vote.
Motion passes.
Okay. So, Joy, have we handled everything to your satisfaction? All right. Ms. Data Cruz, do you have anything you want to share with us?
May you all have a good night and drive home safely.
Yes, ma'am, and you too, you have the longest drive.
I have the longest commute, thank you.
That's right. All right, thank you all, appreciate your efforts tonight, thank you. We're-